I hope you saved it so you could send a copy of it to somebody.
Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, May 3, 2023, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. If you'll please join in a few moments of silence. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions and I will call on Chief Hale to begin this. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today to introduce Lauren Bailey, our newest employee who's an administrative assistant for the department. Lauren was born and raised in Manio and a graduate of Manio High School. After high school, she obtained her degree in business administration and criminal justice through North Carolina Wesleyan College in Rocky Mountain. She's married to her wonderful husband, Kwame, and they still reside in Manio today. They have a newborn ace, which she thoroughly enjoys during her time off, along with spending time with friends and family. We're glad to have her join our department and look forward to the many years. I can say that she has hit the ground running. She is in our evidence room now, getting that straight, and that's a challenge within itself, but she is at it hard and fast as we go. Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you.
Lauren, good luck to you.
Thank you.
And I want to note that due to a recent back surgery, Commissioner Sanders is going to be excused from standing and getting up and down this morning, so he'll be remaining seated. All right. Next is Public Services. Excuse me.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Andy Schaefer from Facilities Maintenance. Andy lives with his wife Amy in Harbinger. He has two. He lives in Grandy, and his wife is Camille. He has twin daughters, Molly and Dora. He loves fishing, animals, gardening, and time with his family, and he loves being with the town of Nags Head.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Next, I'd like to introduce Aubrey Everett. Aubrey lives in Harbinger. His wife is Amy. He has two daughters, Erica and Janaya. Aubrey has served in the U.S. Army. He loves fast cars and sports, and he's glad to be with the town of Nags Head. Next, I'd like to introduce Jason Berry with sanitation. Jason was born and raised in Manio. He's been married to his wonderful wife Evelyn for 18 years. They have two children, a son, LJ, who's active in middle school sports, football, basketball, and baseball, and they have a daughter, Jocelyn, who is three years old, and she is their little ball of energy. Jason comes to the town with years of experience in working with sanitation. Thank you, Jason. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce Andy Harold with sanitation. Andy has lived on the Outer Banks for about 20 years. He and his wife Amy have two teenagers, Andy and Ava. He comes to us with experience of heavy equipment and utility work. He likes hunting and fishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. That brings us to our proclamation for Police Officers Week, and I'll ask Chief Hale to return to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you bringing up reading the proclamation today for Police Week coming up, which is the week of May 15 that falls on each year. This week hits home with us because we lost one of our own. Own Police Memorial Day in '09 for Sergeant Earl Murray, that was responding to a breaking and entering call in the early morning hours during inclement weather. I can tell you each year, we remember him throughout the year, but each year we go to DC during Police Week to be with Kim and the daughters. We just got back a week before last from Burlington. Kim is very active in the North Carolina Cops Memorial. She is the leader for North Carolina on that and is invaluable to the families of fallen officers that she helps them through that process. We spent two days in Burlington with her a week and a half ago for the memorial service they held there, and even though she don't live here anymore, she's in Charlotte. The girls are in Charlotte. It's good to see her face twice a year when we go to let her know that we still, they're still a part of our family, that we're never going to forget them, and I appreciate the board doing the proclamation for this Police Week coming up in May.
Thank you. And since we don't see her as well, if you will, when you see her, convey our appreciation and thanks for the work that she's doing in carrying Officer Murray's memory forward. Appreciate that. Thank you. This is a proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Nags Head Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents and visitors of the town of Nags Head. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Nags Head Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. And whereas we should let each of us take the time to reflect on the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Earl Murray Jr. made for the town of Nags Head on May 15, 2009, and the rest of the officers who have done so nationwide. And let each of us keep their family, friends, and all fellow officers in our thoughts and prayers. Now therefore, the Nags Head Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of the town of Nags Head and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through 21, 2023 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21, 2023, as Police Week and call upon all citizens of Nags Head to observe the 15th day of May, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect for the survivors of our fallen heroes, this being the third day of May, 2023. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us now to a presentation by the Outer Banks Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Coalition.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to address.
I'm also a resident and homeowner here in the town of Nagshead. This group, we are looking for some, what is the button I'm looking for here? Perfect. We're a grassroots organization founded in 2013, a dedicated group, but unfortunately too small of a group. So the reason I am here addressing you all is we are seeking new participation on the coalition in either board positions or just concerned citizens. So we're partnered with local school systems, businesses. My day job is Marketing Director for Kitty Hawk Kites, and our company is very involved in the organization, as are a few others. But businesses, citizens, law enforcement agencies, we have representation from all towns with our police departments. But we view ourselves as an Outer Banks-wide organization. We're also working to build relationships with the DOT, organizations like Watch for Me NC, Let's Go NC, and Safe Routes to School. So our mission is to help facilitate the education and awareness of practical bicycle and pedestrian safety to drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, and all those who live on or visit the Outer Banks of North Carolina in a positive and productive manner. We do so with events that we join, bike lights, things like that, which I'll get into some more detail on. So I was able to acquire some facts from the past five years for the towns of Nagshead and Kill Devil Hills. As you can see, bicycle and pedestrian incidents are way too common here, and, you know, one is too many, and unfortunately, some of these do result in fatalities. So it is a present need, absolutely, throughout the Outer Banks, and we are looking for more people to help us get the word out. So those are the stats, but this is the real story. You know, woman on bicycle fatally struck by vehicle on North Groton Highway in Kentucky. This happens far too often from our perspective, so we are here trying to get the word out. So some of the things that we do, we provide bicycle lights to students, to seasonal workers, to J-1 international students. We also provide reflective bags to that organization so they can be bright and be seen. That is one of the major mottos that we try to espouse. We provide safety information and public service announcements on local media, in particular, the radio stations have been great partners, and we support local events surrounding bicycle safety, especially at our schools. But what we could do is better outreach and partnerships with local organizations and advocacy for safe routes, new pathways, wider distribution of safety materials. That's what we could do if we had more participation on our board. So our request is really only a few hours of a month commitment, generally over lunch at a local restaurant, but it's to help steer the direction of bicycle and pedestrian safety here on the Outer Banks, volunteer at events, and get those lights onto bicycles where they're needed. So if anyone is interested in joining, you can scan that QR code. That'll bring up your mail app to email chair@obxbikeped.org, and just send an email and let us know of your interest, or you can follow us on those social channels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you leave, let me ask if board members have any comments or questions for you this morning.
It's a great organization. I urge everybody to try to get involved. We're getting ready to start having an influx of kids coming home from college, J-1 students coming in to work in our businesses, and it provides a lot of help to them. So, please volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what y'all are doing. I was part of the group that founded it in 2013 and really enjoyed my time when I was with the police department. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate what you do and appreciate your work on bicycle helmets, too. See, those is very important, so thank you.
Couldn't agree more. I was a bicycle commuter in New York City before I moved to the Outer Banks and had several run-ins, and if I hadn't been wearing a helmet on one of those occasions, I may not be here.
It's very important. Thank you.
Same here, and I'll just say, as a, you know, regular bicycle commuter, I really appreciate the work that y'all are doing in the community to raise the awareness. I joked recently that, you know, last week was Bike Week on the Outer Banks, and for, it's my observation, it's the safest week for cycling on the Outer Banks because everyone is much more aware. They, sometimes they might miss seeing a bicycle, but they don't miss the motorcycles, and they're much more attentive, so it's a great week to ride your bike as well. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and I will turn that over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each month, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide public comment. This is an opportunity to address matters of interest or concern to the board. It's not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment. But anybody who wishes to make public comment, this is your opportunity to do so. I will point out that we have a series of public hearings on the agenda, and if you're here to provide comment in connection with any of those public hearings, you should wait until the hearing is called to provide your comment. But for anybody else, this is your opportunity. If you'll please start by going to the podium, telling us your name and where you live, and then addressing your comments to the board. Who'd like to go first? Is there anybody who wants to address the board? Mr. Mayor, there seems to be no public comment at this time.
Very well. Thank you. That then brings us to the consent agenda, which you have before you. There are seven items, and a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public hearings, which clearly is what everyone is here for this morning. So I will turn it over to Mr. Leidy again for item F1, the public hearing to consider the official zoning map amendment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment request pertaining to the historic character area. We'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis provided by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to quickly pull up the map that we're going to be talking about today, just so that we have it in front of us as we go through this. Okay, so as you've noted, I am before you this morning to present staff's analysis of the proposed map amendment that's associated with the historic character area. I think everyone is likely aware at this point, but just to revisit, this map amendment encumbers the area from Danube Street, which is going to be down here north, up to Hollowell Street in between the highways, and then a small section of Memorial just north of Hollowell. We have the inset for the remainder down here. I'm not going to go into great detail about the history of this, but just a very quick timeline. The initial public hearing for this item, which was both the map amendments and the text amendments, that was heard by the Board of Commissioners at their March 1st meeting. There was a lot of great public input from many of you that are here today, and as a result of that, staff was asked to make some revisions to the text and bring that back for the board's review at their March 15th mid-month meeting. Also, at their March 1st meeting, they had asked for some considerations to the map, specifically to revisit 100 East Hollowell, and to recirculate the map back through the planning board, to have them review the map in its entirety with regard to the districts and the designations. So we did do that. When the board's March 15th meeting came around, staff presented those text amendments that had been revised, and those were adopted. That language is included in your board packet. It was also on the internet in case anyone wanted to review that. The language was largely about establishing the C5 historic character commercial zoning district and the use standards that were associated with that district. Planning staff did take this map, the one that you can see on the screen here, back to the planning board at their March 21st meeting. And as you can see, as was noted, the only difference here from what you had seen previously is that this parcel here, 100 East Hollowell Street, is now being proposed to be redesignated from R3 high-density residential to the C5 historic character commercial zoning district. The planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the map amendment, as is shown on the screen. I do want to note that planning board members did discuss the map at length, and they were comfortable making the recommendation for approval, knowing that as part of this, the public hearing process would occur again, where the properties would be posted, all the affected properties would be mailed a letter stating what was occurring, as well as all the adjoining properties. So knowing that everyone would have another opportunity to provide input or ask questions, the planning board felt okay about making that recommendation. We have had a few communications. We've had a few affected property owners reach out to me with some questions, but to this point, no one has expressed any concerns. We continue to hear from the property owners east of 100th Street, or 100 East Hollowell Street, so through here. They would like to ensure that moving forward, any consideration to adopt this map included this area remaining in the R3 designation. Even while we may be considering redesignating Hollowell to C5, that they remain in the R3. And again, having this difference between the two, commercial and residential designation, that provides various buffering opportunities should 100 East Hollowell be developed commercially. We've continued to hear from property owners within the historic Cottage Row area. Many of them have properties between the highways which are affected. We received an email correspondence stating several of these property owners would be interested in having their properties kept as the originally proposed R3. That's going to be in this area here that I'm pointing to. Cecilia Winslow, Margaret Bennett, Julian Bobbitt, Jr., Helen Wiley, Mary Lawson, Bebe Griffin, Elaine Wood, and Bryce, and Ann McMullin have all requested that consideration be given to the R3 zoning district in this area. Also, I want to note that staff was contacted by the property owners of 4008 South Virginia Dare Trail. I don't see the property owners in here today, but Mr. Winkler and Mrs. Hope, they ran the Beachcomber Museum for a very long time. They've requested that the board consider extending the C5 zoning designation south to their property. They say they do have an interest in revitalizing the museum and feel like the C5 would be best suited for their property. On this map, the property we're talking about is located right here. As you can see, this had been proposed as R3. Just to the north of that is where the C5 would terminate, so again, they're just asking for consideration to have the C5 encumber their property as well. I updated the planning board on this request from the property owners at 4008 at their April 18th meeting, and they had no concerns or objections should the board wish to consider that. That's all I have with regard to the presentation for the map amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
If the board were to consider the Beachcomber Museum, would that be considered spot zoning?
It would not be considered spot zoning. Let me zoom in on this. It would not be considered spot zoning. It would actually just be an expansion of the already existing C5.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes.
And the other question, the names that you previously called out, are they comfortable with the R3 designation, and have we included that in R3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How large, how large is that property at the Beachcomber Museum?
I am not...
Fifty by 300.
Fifty by 300. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Anything further, Ms. Wyatt?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Would any member of the public like to comment on this proposed zoning map amendment? Yes, sir.
Good morning again. My name is Basil Velch. My wife and I live at 3521 South Memorial Avenue in Nagshead. The updated zoning amendment map that Kelly just reviewed shows a combination of R3 and C5 with that 4.7 acre lot at Hollowell and 158 is C5, as she pointed out. It also shows the properties back, the properties that back up to it on South Virginia Dare Trail, as well as the ones on the east side of South Memorial are R3. My neighbors and I hope you will approve this version as presented. It's a good mix of residential and historic character commercial zoning, and this will help ensure the look, feel, and nature of the historic character area and the neighborhood's character area as described in the Nagshead Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So I thank the Board of Commissioners for all their work on this, and the planning board, and Kelly and her staff for all the work on this, and also thank you for letting me speak.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shelley Blackstone. My property backs up to the 4.7 acre lot where you see kind of that mixed use between residential on the, on the beach road and, and now C5 behind it. I agree with Basil in the spirit of, of being neighborly and compromise, and I think that, I just think this whole process has been amazing, and I, it's, it's refreshing. I would like to just emphasize that that area is, the area behind the residence on the beach road there that back up to the 4.7 acre lot, they, they're, they're on an incline, there, there's a lot of, you know, flooding. They, there are 20, 30-year-old trees. These aren't, this is not scrub brush. These are like live oaks, tall pines that are holding in water. So the concept of having some sort of buffer between, you know, of trees that remain rather than being bulldozed and replanted, because it's very, it's brackish water, it's very hard to, to replace something that's taken 20 or 30 years to grow, and it does, does have an impact on, like I said, on holding in the water and preventing flooding. So it would be great if that was considered in any kind of sale or development of that property. I also think that since the C5 also still includes single-family housing, so it could be developed as a nice cul-de-sac that comes off of the Hollow, off the Hollowell, that it could still have a buffer of trees on the highway and between the properties. So I just, just wanted to point that out, that, you know, that's going to be important. But I am very grateful for the, for the process and, and how it's worked, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstone.
Good morning, Mayor Cahoon and Board Commissioners. My name is Susan Callen, and along with my husband, Charles Callen, are the owners of property at 104 East Hollowell Street in the old Nagshead Place neighborhood. While we know that change in our town is inevitable, our hope is that change can come without altering the character of the area. As property owners, we do support the new zoning map amendment, or rezoning, proposed by the town planning board that would redesignate the 4.7 acre site located at East Hollowell and Route 158 from R3 medium-density residential to C5 historic character commercial. When all our voices are heard, may a peaceful resolve be reached, and may any change... and may any change not only enhance but preserve the legacy of our town and its historic character area. Thank you for the time given by both you and the Planning Board regarding this issue. Tourists will come and go, but many of us have a permanent interest in this community. Remember that character preservation has a way of identifying us, connecting us, shaping us, and telling the story of who we are. Character preservation holds an attraction of our history and a sense of community pride. We put our trust in you, our local government, our local town government, to advocate in the best interest of Nags Head and its people, past, present, and future. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Pavlak. Want to say good morning to everybody. Want to say, my wife and I, Pat, we are owners of South 3616 South Virginia Dare Trail. We joined the new C5 proposal. And we also want to say that we are in support of the new amendment, the rezoning plan, the combination of C5 and C3. Seems like it's a real good combination for, to sustain what we want, to preserve the residential area that you've shown for the, in the yellow area. But in addition to that, also giving and providing opportunities for the commercial areas to have development, but within the characteristics of what we've been trying to do for Nags Head. Plan also supports the Comprehensive Land Use Plan of 2017, and I think we've had in previous meetings where we said that should have been done a little bit sooner, but here it is today, and we're working through it, and we're addressing that. And I think that that's very good, to have that done now. And I think also tied in with the C, as I said before, the C5, it's still, there's certain restrictions, but it still allows for full development. I think there's been some misunderstanding, as we've gone through the process, about what exactly the C2, C5, what that's going to do. It seems like all the discussions and everything has really helped to create a good compromise solution for all this. No one knows what the future's going to hold, but again, we want to make sure that Nags Head stays as a family-oriented and quaint village where people want to come and stay and visit and live accordingly, and also do business here. So again, I want to thank everybody for all their efforts. And I also thought that the way the whole process worked, the compromise and all, was, I thought that was really, really good. I was very impressed with the professionalism and the effort of everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak.
Hi, good morning. Debbie McComall, my husband Brendan and I have owned property for 13 years, and with his retirement, we're starting to enjoy it. I'm not going to repeat what the four previous speakers said, because I think they said it very well. We also support the R3-C5 proposal. We feel like it provides the best compromise for everyone, and also to preserve the beautiful area that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to address the Board on this, in this public hearing?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Harris with Kitty Hawk Kites, celebrating our 50th year next year in Nags Head. Thank you for all the help that you've given us through the years. I'd like to ask that, in the text amendments, that again, that Part 9, 8.3, 2.1, 3 be looked at, where it specifies 4,200 square feet for commercial dwelling along, or commercial building along Highway 12. I'd like to see it be equitable with residential, which is 5,000 square feet along Highway 12. And I do appreciate all the work that's been done on these, on this zoning map, by the planning staff and the Planning Board, and you all, tremendous amount of work in keeping, you know, with the heritage of old Nags Head. I would like to see accessory dwelling units added to the C5 district. I think it could really help our year-round housing. And I think it's a perfect zone to allow that in, and it is in keeping with historic Nags Head. So I ask you to look at that, and also ask you to look at extending the C5 district to other historic districts in the town, namely Whalebone Junction, where we have a number of historic businesses, Salmon Omies, Owen's Restaurant, Cahoon's Grocery. And I believe that C5 should be extended to that historic area of Nags Head also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board on this matter?
Hi, my name's Rick Arthur, and my wife and I have a house at 3535 South Memorial Avenue. Only two quick things to say. I'm not going to repeat everything everybody else has said. First, I want to say that both my wife Barbara and I support the zoning as laid out here. We do think it was a very good compromise, and also really were impressed by the process that we've gone through over the past six months or so. And again, good compromise. Like to thank everybody involved, the Planning Board, the planning staff. Just excellent job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. All right, anyone else? This is the last chance. At this time, does the Board wish to receive any other information regarding this proposed zoning map amendment before you begin deliberations? All right, if not, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the Board may begin its deliberations on this.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Appreciate everyone's input. You have an ordinance before you that would adopt this map in our package. I will note that that, among the items included in that ordinance, is a note which says that after reviewing the information, the Board finds that the zoning map amendment request is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan. So the consistency statement is included in the ordinance. And so I think for any discussion, perhaps we might have a motion to put this on the floor.
Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the map as presented, with one change, that the lands that are, as we all know it as Nags Head Beach Museum, be designated C5.
Very good.
Second that motion.
I have a motion, as you heard, and a second. Now that we have that, I'll ask if there's any discussion. I'll start with Commissioner Sears.
No discussion, but I do want to thank the Planning Board, Town Staff, and all the citizens that have been involved in this discussion for the past, seems like, year. But there has been a lot of hard work and a lot of hours put in by everyone, and I want to say thank you for that.
Anything else, Commissioner Cahoon?
No, I'd like to thank all the staff. I know Kelly and her staff have worked very hard. Megan, the Planning Board has worked extremely hard. And I'm really appreciative of all the people that have come out to our meetings and voiced their concerns at public comment. I think that's really great. But I will make one observation. I rode, deliberately rode the beach road all the way down to go on Southern Shores the other day. And as I left Nags Head, I, it was just amazing, the difference, and I'm so happy that I live in Nags Head. Also, took the opportunity to ride over to Wonches, to look at some of that land. I'm just happy, I can say more than ever, I'm happy I live in Nags Head, but even more, the comments that I've received from people from out of town that have ridden and noticed the signs that we post when we're getting ready to do something, and the other units of government that don't post anything. So, kudos to our staff. Andy, thank you very much.
Yes, and I'll weigh in here and say, you know, regardless of, regardless of the outcome, it's been a very healthy process, and it's been a process that you would hope that every local unit of government would follow in trying to make this kind of decision with the necessary give and take between all the parties. And, you know, that does make me happy with the result that we've achieved. Commissioner Brinkley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, one of the comments was, "The process has been amazing." The process has been amazing because of you, the citizens and property owners. Too many times, we have public hearings, and nobody comes, nobody speaks. This is what, that's what it's about. It's amazing because of the work of the Planning Department, and it's amazing because of the work of Town Staff. That's what makes it amazing. Again, thank you all for coming out. I had made a comment during one of the meetings that my philosophy is that businesses should be along the bypass. And I still feel that way. But understanding that the residents, or the residents and property owners that have requested that their property along the bypass be rezoned to R3, I'm okay with that, and I will support that, because that's what they wish to do. I'm okay with the Beachcomber Museum, I think that's great. And I'll end it with that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Well, I don't really have anything to add. I just can echo what you guys have said, and I think it's been a great process as well. And I thank everybody that's been involved in all the hard work that's gone into it. Thank you.
You know, I'll say about that, you know, none of us are excited about the possibility that residential lots, additional residential lots, might be developed with curb cuts on the highway. I mean, that's just not, that seems, you know, unsafe, and a little bit counterproductive. And so, but we're going to allow residential in C5. But I think what's important to remember, and again, you look at this process that we had, is that if somebody wants to come to that residential area that fronts 158, with the understanding that we would like to have commercial fronting 158, I think you'll find the Board probably receptive to a good proposal there. And that, you know, it's not, it's not hard and fast, and if an appropriate kind of proposal was made, we're likely to listen to it. So that's all, that's all I'll say about that. So if there's no further discussion, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor with the change that you heard, properly seconded. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to public hearing number two, which is a public hearing to consider a vested right special use permit. Yes, and actually, if we will, I think maybe what we'll do is we'll just pause the meeting for about five minutes, just to let the folks leave who were here for that first item. All right, the Board has returned to open session. And the next item is, is that public hearing to consider a vested right special use site plan for Nags Head Church? Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If I may.
I'm sorry, that's you.
I'd like to introduce this matter, because on this matter, the Board sits as a quasi-judicial body in hearing this. And so we will now open the quasi-judicial hearing. When the Board of Commissioners considers a vested right special use or site plan amendment, the Board sits as a quasi-judicial body. A quasi-judicial hearing is the process that we, by which the Board adjudicates how the general law applies to a particular situation based on an evidentiary record presented during the hearing. Your two key responsibilities are, one, to determine contested facts, and two, to apply the legal standards to the facts. You may apply only the standards already contained in the town's ordinance. You are not permitted to change or modify those standards during this hearing or as part of your decision in this case. In conducting this hearing, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and to offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The Board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing, and if you wish to do that, just let me know, and I will give you the opportunity to do so. Questions from the floor will not be permitted, except by cross-examination from any of the sworn witnesses who are recognized to speak. A member must not vote on this application if the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the Board member. If such a direct and substantial financial conflict exists, the member should disclose that and ask to be excused from consideration of the matter. If any of the members present have had any contact with anyone prior to this hearing in which the particulars of this application were discussed, or if you've received letters, email messages, phone calls, or other contact from anyone concerning this matter prior to this hearing, you must disclose those communications. You must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts presented during this hearing, and disregard the particulars discussed with the applicant or any other party outside of this hearing. A member must base his or her decision on the evidence presented during this hearing. A member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of this application before the hearing must not participate in the decision on this application. Your decision must also be based on competent, substantial, and material evidence properly entered into the record of the hearing. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during this hearing. While you may be presented before or during this hearing with uns sworn statements contained in letters, emails, and the like, uns sworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that is actually presented during this hearing. Unsworn evidence, such as letters or emails, can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. So, at this time, if any member needs to recuse themselves from this hearing because of one of the reasons I have just explained, please request that a motion be made to recuse you from participating in this hearing or voting on this matter at this time. Anybody? All right. Also, if any member of the Board needs to disclose a communication about the subject of this hearing that the member has had with one of the applicants or another person prior to this meeting, you may now disclose those communications at this time. Okay, at this time, we are ready to proceed with the evidentiary presentation. And so those folks who will be presenting evidence regarding this application, if you will please approach the town clerk so that she can administer an oath.
Do you swear or report that the testimony about the truth and the truth and nothing but the truth?
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now begin with the evidentiary presentation presenting the staff's analysis through the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. As you've noted, this is a vested right special use permit site plan review that's been submitted by Albemarle and Associates, Mr. Mike Morway, who's here today, on behalf of Nags Head Church. What they're asking for is authorization to expand the church parking lot. I have the site plan up on the projector to review. And it's this section here to the west that they're looking to expand. And we'll move through this as I go through the report. But, they'll be directing a stormwater that's associated with this expansion even further west along the rear of their property. So, I'm sure everybody is aware, the property's at 105 West Soundside Road. It's currently a religious complex, and it's in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district. The property's located in a shaded X flood zone. But, the town of Nags Head has a local elevation standard that would place this property with a RFP-E of nine feet, means sea level. So, of course, that doesn't apply to the parking. But, there is a shed that's currently located here in the rear that they're going to be relocating to here. So, this shed is going to need to meet, it is over 300 square feet. So, it is going to need to meet that nine-foot LES. They're aware of that. So, moving through the zoning specific items, Section 6.6 of our Table of Uses and Activities, we do have religious complex as a special use within the R2 medium-density residential district. There are some supplemental standards that are associated with that. Again, there's no structures associated with the request. But, this does rise to the level of needing a site plan review because of the extent of lot coverage being proposed and the need for additional stormwater management. So, sometimes you hear me talk about a minor site plan with administrative approval. What they've proposed is beyond that administrative level. So, that's why it's here before you today. Because they have requested vested rights, that kicks it into that special use category. So, that being said, the total allowable lot coverage for this property is 30%. They can increase that to 45%. Then, they have the appropriate stormwater management facilities to retain a two-inch storm event. Their proposed lot coverage with the expansion is 22.8%. So, they're compliant with that. We don't need to look at height or architectural design for this request. With regard to parking, I will say that the existing parking that's on-site now does meet the parking requirements for the number of seats within the church. The additional parking is being requested based upon some overlap in times for their, their church schedules, potentially activities down the road as well. So, I think the engineer, Mike Morway, can possibly speak to that, or the pastor as well will be happy to address the need for the additional parking above and beyond what's required. We do have Section 10.92.14.4 of the UDO. It requires a minimum of 20% of the surface area of the parking area and drive aisles to be constructed in permeable surface materials. The parking lot expansion is a total of 21,880 square feet of coverage. And of that, 23.4% is proposed to be in a permeable surface material. So, they are compliant there. With regard to landscape buffering, there is a requirement that a compliant 10-foot wide buffer be shown when there's any new parking adjacent to a right-of-way. So, the only area that we have new parking is this area here, adjacent to Soundside Road. And taking into account the site triangle and visibility pulling out, what they've proposed there is just a minimal amount of shrubs and low-lying vegetation. Section 10.93.3.2, that speaks to the commercial transitional protective yard. It requires an increased buffer to be provided and maintained when non-residential land uses are adjacent to residential land uses. The protective landscape buffer is required to be 10 feet in width with two rows of acceptable plant material. The property to the west, as you can see here, is developed residentially. So, they have proposed a compliant transitional, a commercial transitional protective yard through here. And then, property to the south along this long piece of property where they're relocating their stormwater management, that is also developed residentially. So, that 10-foot wide buffer is gonna be required there as well. Looking back here, there's a lot of existing mature vegetation. So, where possible, we're encouraging that vegetation to be kept. There's a requirement for interior parking lot landscaping. Essentially, 10% of the area of the parking stalls need to be provided in some landscaping material. And approximately 11.3% of landscaped area has been proposed in this, in this new parking area. Vegetation preservation or planting requires that new development projects either preserve a minimum of 10% of the lot's total area in existing mature vegetation, or they plant 15%. When you look at this parcel in totality with the vegetation that's being left in this area as well as what is further west, it's well beyond the 15% to be kept. And I will say, there is a landscape and vegetation plan. I am just afraid that as I scroll down to it, it'll take me 10 minutes to get back up to this one. So, when we're done, I'll scroll down so we can all, all see it. They did propose some new lighting for the property, and that was included in your packet. We reviewed that for compliance with the lighting fixture as well as the photometrics. And we found compliance with that. There's no new signage being proposed at this time. The Dare County Health Department has reviewed and approved the proposal as it's been submitted, and that approval is included in your package. A town engineer, David Ryan, has reviewed this for both traffic circulation and stormwater management. And he's found that the proposal is compliant in both of those areas. The project is gonna have to meet North Carolina Fire Prevention Code regulations. And this has been reviewed by the Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height, found to be in compliance. And Public Works has taken a look at this as well and determined that the proposal is compliant with their regulations. Before I go into staff analysis, I'll just take a brief moment to scroll down so that everybody can see the additional drawings that have been provided. Should there be any questions? This is our stormwater engraving. You can see the topography here. This is the existing parking. And then, as we scroll down, scoot this over a little bit. Now, you can see the proposed parking here as well as the vegetation that's being proposed. You can see the interior landscaping in these areas. And you can see this 10-foot wide transitional protective yard with the appropriate number of plantings proposed. And we have the inset for the stormwater management, where you can also see the 10-foot wide commercial transitional protective yard. And then, down here's our lighting information. Proper fixtures have been proposed. All that said, staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the use and development standards as well as land use policies. The planning board at their March 21st meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the vested right special use major site plan amendment. I will say, both the planning staff as well as the planning board recognize there's a lot of mature vegetation in this area and a lot of oaks. And the oak is obviously the town tree, so we wanna make every effort to keep the oaks that we can and work with staff through the process to ensure we're keeping as much vegetation as possible. So, the planning board was in agreement with that as well. You do have some findings because this is a vested right special use permit. There's some findings that are included in your package. So, if you're inclined to approve this, just take those into consideration as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Yes, Ms. Kahun?
Kelly, given that this is a parking area in between two areas of residential, are there any proposals to limit the hours that the lights would stay on? Since the church is not gonna be open 24 hours a day, probably. Is it reasonable to put a hours of operation of light so that the dark side still happens for the neighbors?
Yes, so, and perhaps Mr. Morway or the pastor can speak more to this. But, the planning board did ask several questions about lighting and the adjoining residential uses. Mr. Morway can correct me if I am wrong here. But, I believe there's no new light fixtures that are being proposed along this western boundary where we have the stormwater management. So, here, adjacent to this residential area, there's no new lighting being proposed. Back here, there are some new lighting fixtures being proposed. But, they were amenable at the planning board level to ensure that there was no glare or nuisance to the residential properties to the west. So, perhaps they can speak to a timeframe of when these lights could be turned off.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt?
How much vegetation would we be losing back in that proposed stormwater site? I mean, you talked about a lot of mature oaks, and that's obviously between two residential areas.
Yeah, so, the way the ordinance is written, essentially, you are allowed to remove vegetation when it's in the footprint of certain things, including your stormwater management areas. There's a significant amount of existing mature vegetation back here. There's just beautiful stands of oaks, to be very honest. And they, they've acknowledged that this is a very vegetated area and that they would make every effort to keep as much as possible and to keep as much of this mature vegetation along this boundary. They also agreed to working with staff on what can and cannot be removed and what should remain. But, to answer your question, there, there is going to be a significant amount of clearing of existing vegetation here.
So, they would have to clear it to, I mean, I look at the pros and cons as to it's leaving the trees, better stormwater management than going back in there and taking them all out.
So, it's one thing that we did talk about, at least at the technical review level, was are there stormwater measures that can actually help, that you can have plantings within? Perhaps you could keep your live oaks and just kind of design your stormwater measure around it? Or, are there plantings that you can keep in there that are gonna thrive in the stormwater measure?
All right, any other questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Yes, I have one. Just, so, just to be clear about this. I mean, they, they are doing this, the parking is on the primary site. They need this triangle to the west for stormwater, for the stormwater, for that parking. There's a drive to nowhere that's part of the site plan. Is that drive required, is that strictly for construction and maintenance of the stormwater basin?
Yes, that's what the applicant has indicated. The access would be paved to this point. And then, from that point forward, it would just be cleared and left natural for access purposes only. But, yes, it, there is concern there that there's a need for clearing for an area to just access your stormwater.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, so, our ordinance doesn't, I know our ordinance requires maintenance of stormwater basins. I mean, you know, they sign an agreement, there's perpetual maintenance of stormwater areas. But, there's not a specific requirement for a road or a space to, in order to do that?
No, there isn't.
Okay, then I'll have a question for the applicant in a few minutes.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt at this point? All right, does the applicant have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, all right. Thank you, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we, the applicant may present evidence in support of the application.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this project to you. I appreciate Kelly's efforts and the rest of staffs in, in this project. And I appreciate the church for bringing us in to help solve this issue that they have. The issue that they have is they vomit, they just have, they don't have enough parking spaces right now. In the past, they have, when the issue comes, people have fallen back on parking on the side of the street, which is not permitted now. They've been parking in their infiltration basin. One of them is drivable, so they'll have staff get there early before, before the people arrive and, and take up that extra space. So, what we're trying to do here is just solve a problem that they've got. And I think, I think the, the site boundary itself is a bit unusual. But, the layout for the way to address this problem was very clear. There's not really any way, we don't wanna put parking back in the extension to the, to the west. And I don't think, I don't think the neighborhood around it would wanna see that either. We do need to relocate, and we need to add stormwater management areas. And that's what, that's a natural place to put it. Let's face it, stormwater basins go and, go well in odd-shaped areas. So, that's what brought us to the plan that, that we have here. And we'd be glad to address any questions and comments you have.
All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Morway?
I'll start, since I had a question that I started with Ms. Wyatt. So, just to confirm with you, Mike, the purpose for this road, I'm gonna call it a road. I mean, it is to construct and then maintain this stormwater basin, and does it serve any other purpose?
It's just a graded construction and maintenance access. They, the basin there is going to be fairly shallow because we're trying to make sure it doesn't turn into a swampy area.
Right.
It's really gonna be a lawn. It's only a foot deep. Hydraulically, it was challenging in getting the water to get to that area at that elevation. But, it was important us to, to keep it up high so it doesn't turn into, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lawn, basically. The, there's been no talk about uses any further west. They have, that whole strip of land is a little over four acres. And it's, it's less than an acre that's getting used in this. The only thing that has really been discussed at all, and they do wanna preserve the vegetation back there, is the ability to, to create a pathway system back there possibly for recreational purposes. Well, we talked about the preservation of existing vegetation with the planning board and staff during T R C. We did suggest, and it was suggested actually on both sides, that prior to any clearing, they go ahead and stake out the basin, top of basin limits, which is essentially where our grading is going to begin. And then we can go back out in the field and see if there's any specimens that were marginal, that if we just went and blindly followed the lines on the paper, we would wind up taking them out. But we would have the ability here to say, well, we can, we can curve this in, save this oak. We do have a little bit of room back that we would be able to make up that stormwater, but we can make field adjustments, if you will, to be able to preserve some of this.
Well, my question is really less about access and future access. I realize it would be a little unconventional, but could this stormwater basin be constructed and then maintained simply by driving into the basin and backing out? In other words, without building the adjacent, I mean, cut the amount of clearing in half, cut the amount of grading in half, and basically build the, drive into the basin, build the basin, back out, and then maintain the basin in the same way?
I'm presenting this as possible use of a lawn area. Certainly nothing that would get frequently used.
Right, right.
But they have, they have a little bit of land up in front of the church that they, that they use for socialization. There's not really any good space for youth events, if you will.
Right.
And that's why I'm trying to keep this where we can provide that usability with it.
Yes, right, okay. But I mean, it would be, I understand that it would just be a nice shallow, basically, foot, one foot to breast lawn is what this is going to look like, basically.
Right, right.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
That's all. All right. Any other, any other questions for?
Just to follow up, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
On the mayor's suggestion that, or question, backing in and out rather than clearing that whole section of what you've got proposed to clear, is it, you could still use a basin because you're only, you're going to have to maintain it at some point anyway, but theoretically, could you use the basin, drive in, clean it up, and leave without clearing all the rest of the property? As it's depicted on this?
It, it, the access becomes additional usable land for recreational activity.
So, theoretically, you want to go ahead and clear it anyway, more than just for the drainage basin. Let's put it on the table, you want to use it for recreational purposes, not just a drainage area.
Potentially, yes.
So, is it going to be developed or just?
There's been no talk about development other than access to a trail system back there.
Commissioner Sanders, did you have a question?
No, I was just wondering if you're looking to develop it. I mean, is it, is that, it's a residential, residential area?
Residential, it is R2.
It's R2?
Yes.
It's R2 area and you're looking to kind of develop it as a recreational area? Is that what I'm understanding?
We're, we're looking to have space where they could be able to do things in the yard. I mean, there's not, we're not talking about starting a baseball league or anything like that.
Yeah, I understand.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Completely all for their subject. Removing a basin and adding a 30-inch pipe that connects the drain to Soundside Road's pipe and also across the highway. I see we've tied up into the existing pipe that was a drain. It's on the west side of the old parking lot. I guess that's where they're currently parking, and it's just to the west of where you added those additional parking spots. Did you consider when you added 30-inch pipe, I know the rest of the pipe's probably smaller than underneath their structure, but is that adequate for the use of that neighboring subdivision that's not been developed yet?
That is 30-inch pipe leading up to that point and 30-inch pipe leading beyond that point.
So, my, let me clarify my question. How wide was the drainage, the dry drainage area there? And how much, I mean, if it has a place to sink through the sand versus a place now we have to carry it downstream, are we allowing enough space for that? And I understand on paper, we have, and you've looked at it, Mr. Ryan's looked at it, so engineering-wise, you have, but in that exercise, as mayor would call it, did you consider the runoff from the neighboring southern subdivision that's not been developed yet coming into that ditch that before it hits that pipe?
It's my understanding that that subdivision is managing 4.3 inches of runoff, just like the church is. So, I wouldn't anticipate an increase. There was no hydraulic modeling on the existing system or this new system, we were merely matching the upstream and the downstream pipes?
Okay, yeah. Just looking at that from, is it going to cause a backup one way or another? I mean, you've got so many little stormwater measures put into place. I just, I have seen an instance where the adjoining property wasn't taken into consideration, met every standard, but caused the problem. They had to come back and redevelop that in a residential setting, and that has a less requirement for stormwater measures. But at the same time, just wanted to know from my standpoint, was that considered when looking at this, or was this purely two-dimensional? I mean, I see you've taken some of the elevations off the other side, but...
The, the 30-inch pipe is going to have more capacity than the existing ditch that's there because, because of the ditch, the vegetation within the ditch, it has a very low conveyance. It's got a low alpha factor. And, I mean, I stopped there, I stopped at the site Friday morning when we were through the majority of our 2.2-inch rainfall. And it was hard to even tell if that water in that ditch was flowing at all. So, with a smooth line pipe, you would have not only a greater flow value through it, but you would also have less maintenance that would be involved in that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Moreway? Anything further for the applicant?
No.
Is, is, is the church representative going to present as well?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to stand before you and talk about this. Just a couple of things. The parking, if you've been by the church on Sunday morning, we've got cars all down Soundside Road right now. That's the reason why we're doing this. The, when the no parking signs went up, we asked, hey, we, we let people park here on the grass all the time, does it have to include the church? And it did. And so, that kind of pulled the trigger on, oh, wait, we can't park on our, on our side yard anymore. And we have utilities running under where cars are parking currently, and we also, and we're parking in our stormwater management currently. And so, that's just a normal Sunday morning. Second thing regarding the access road, we don't have, Mike mentioned a walking path. You can see there up in the corner spot, that diamond kind of triangle-shaped piece of property. We scratched our heads and thought, man, what could we do with this? This is such an interesting piece. And basically, we really can't do anything with it. It's really an odd shape. It's narrow. It's not conducive for anything. The only way I think we could use it is for some kind of walking path. And if we did it that way, if that's what we pursued, one of the ideas even in our head is there's lots and lots of foot traffic up Soundside Road. They do the loop around Deering up by the post office and come through there. They always come through the church parking lot, and we're happy to have the foot traffic through the lot. So, it would just be basically, if you're walking on a hot summer day and you want to get your dog's paws off the, off the road, you can cut in through the lot, do a little loop in the back thing and come out and do your walk. And so, that would be the extent of it. We really can't find another feasible use for the property back there. But having that along the basin allows us to maintain it, and it kind of would give, if at some point we put a path in, it would make it an easy launch point to get that done. But again, that'd be open to the community. The, the building is used by the community all through the week. The Outer Banks Women's Foundation is there, A A is there, New Way Church, the Spanish-speaking church is there. The hospital has their administrative leadership meetings there. The building is constantly available to our community, and we like it that way. We wear the wheels off that place. And so, if that path happened, that would just be a way to enhance that for our community.
All right. Any questions at this point? Oh, all right. Thank you very much. All right. Does the board wish to receive any other evidence before you begin deliberations on this application? Any unanswered questions? If not, we will conclude, well, I'm sorry, one last thing. Ms. Wyatt, anything further from staff on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, we will conclude. The evidentiary presentation and the board may begin its deliberations on this application. And as she pointed out, if the board, if there's a motion to approve this, there are, is a requirement to make the five specific findings to support that.
I have a sense there may want to be a little bit of discussion about this, perhaps in advance of putting a motion on the floor. I could be wrong about that, in which case a motion is welcome, but I'll just open this up to the board for any discussion. I think I need to start down at Commissioner Sanders' end.
I mean, it's a good problem to have that you have too much parking, and I'm glad to see that you're working on it and trying to solve that problem and hope we're not creating another problem. I think my concern is just with some of the live oaks. I'm all in favor of a, of a walking trail, but I would be a little bit concerned as to removal of too much vegetation back there. That's really my only concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooklyn.
Much as the pastor had said, when the no parking signs went up, we did that to try to solve, help solve a problem.
Right.
But it kind of created a problem for them.
Yep.
It is concerning with the amount of vegetation that will be removed, but I'm comfortable that the applicant will work with staff and staff will work with them to preserve whatever they can. And I think a walking path is, would be, would be super for, not only for the activities involving the church and the youth, but other people that may want to utilize it as well. But I think working with staff to try to manage as much of the, leave as much of the natural vegetation as possible is going to be important. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kahun.
I'm happy that church is busy. I think that's wonderful. It shows a lot in the community. I do have concern about the amount of grading that would be done back here and removal of the vegetation. I would prefer to see a more natural method of getting in there and limit your grading. I think the walking path could be done without removing an awful lot of vegetation, but if you're going to start going in there with heavy equipment and bulldozing down, I do have a problem with that. That is a concern. I like the natural area that is being proposed, but I also think about the future. Once you start taking down vegetation, you can't put it back, especially mature vegetation. So, I do have a grave concern about that, and I haven't heard anything to allay that concern that I have at this time. But I, you know, I admire the church for wanting to open it up for walking in the community. I think that's great. But I just, I haven't seen a plan that would allay my concern at this point.
Commissioner Sears.
Hi. I think it's a nice plan, and I may, I'll echo Kevin and Bob on what they stated as far as it's, and Renee, it's great, the church is busy. Unlike the rest of the board, don't have a problem. I think it'll, with the grass and the vegetation and with the stormwater that's been put on the plan, I don't have a problem past that point, especially if you left that gravel access instead of paved access. I know you got to go to the shed, and that's the reason that's paved for that access, but I don't have any, any concerns. I think they put the stormwater measure in there, and I think the buffer zone's there between the residents.
Let me, let me ask, because we, you know, we don't like parking in a rights way, and, and it's great that the church is, is taking the step to solve this, this parking issue, because we like for our facilities in the town to have enough parking and not impose on others and park on the streets. And we love our stormwater ordinance as well, and so, we like to see the stormwater managed as they propose to manage it. And we love our oak trees. We hate to see them cut down, but at some point, you have to bend to make things fit. I would ask the board, you know, the other thing that we're pretty passionate about is making sure that our as-built surveys match our design plans, and we, you know, we, we, we hold people to the line on that, to make sure that they have built the stormwater retention. This would be a great circumstance where if staff had the flexibility and the owner had the flexibility to shift this around a little bit as it fit the mature trees and the circumstances in there, and if it was more naturalistic than it's kind of the, kind of what we have on paper, that would be great, and that would help, help save some of the trees, would accomplish the same goal, and all it requires is a little bit of flexibility that we would permit staff to, to do that. And if the board likes that idea, then I, I would suggest perhaps that we make that part of the motion, although I'll ask John to reiterate, we can't impose, you set us up, we can't impose anything additional.
That's correct.
Really. So, if they've met the rules, they've met the rules. So, it would be perhaps a friendly suggestion. All right. Well, then, having heard all that, perhaps a motion would be in order with a reminder that of the findings.
I make a motion that we approve as presented, then you want me to read the five, considering the five?
You can simply reference them without reading them, I believe.
If you're referring to the five findings listed in the staff report?
Correct.
Yeah, I think the reference is sufficient.
My motion is that.
Okay. Sure, a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. I think it would be a good time, I don't think we'll have any audience for this next public hearing. Sorry? Yes, Commissioner Sears?
Another recess.
Yes, yep, that's what we're getting ready to do. So, we'll take about a 10-minute recess to let people leave, and thank you. Board will be in recess.
Good morning.
All right, the board has returned to session and we're making Mr. Lighty earn his pay today. The next item is another public hearing.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider tax amendments to the town's unified development ordinance as it pertains to the town's short-term rental registration program. On this item, the matter of the board sits as a legislative body and therefore we don't have to go through the same requirements or background that we did for the last public hearing. But to begin this public hearing, we'll start with the staff's analysis presented by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. So this one will hopefully be pretty quick. Here today to present an item for consideration of ordinance amendments as they relate to our short-term rental registration program. So back in 2009, this board adopted amendments to the town code and the U D O that defined short-term rentals and established regulatory requirements for them within the town. The goal of adopting the registration program was to understand the location of where these short-term rentals were within the town, to have a point of contact should any emergencies come up, that we would need to get with someone quickly, and to provide information to the applicant, or the host, or property owner specific to insurance and tax obligations of those that were conducting the activities, and to speak with people about safety requirements and other relevant provisions from the Vacation Rental Act. So up until now, that's been a voluntary program. I know we've talked about some legislation that came out of Schroeder versus the City of Wilmington, where essentially it was stated that localities could not have registration programs for their short-term rentals. So at this time, essentially, all we're doing is rescinding anything that was in our code that was related to the short-term rental registration program. But we are going to continue to try to find mechanisms to regulate short-term rentals within the town because we still want to meet those goals that we previously had about understanding their location, emergency contact information, making sure people have what they need to know about insurance and liability and things like that. So what you have is a draft ordinance amendment where we're rescinding these registration requirements. The planning board heard this at their March 21st meeting and they voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the text amendment as it's proposed, but they were all very interested as well in exploring another mechanism to try to regulate short-term rentals. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anything? All right, is that all, Kelly?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed amendment? Does the board wish to receive any other information? If not, we will now close the public hearing and the board may begin its deliberations on the proposed text amendments.
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the text amendment as soon as...
Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I would say that, for me, I think the heartburn with this, and some of it's because I am a Realtor. You've got an internet company that is representing folks who have no clue what they're doing to rent their property out, most likely in improper manner. And due to that, that's the concern of us trying to do anything. We're a community based on short-term rental. It's not that we're trying to necessarily restrict short-term rental, but if it was all under the guidance of an actual real estate firm, community that is licensed in that field, then this would not be an issue today.
You're absolutely right.
Just wanted to make that statement.
No, excellent point.
Couldn't agree more with that statement.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The next item would be reports and recommendations from the planning board and Planning and Development Director. We're also making Kelly earn her money today.
Kelly?
I want to say this will be quick, but there's actually kind of a lot to talk about. So I'll skim over as much as I can. We'll jump in with the planning board at their last meeting, which was April 18th. We talked about what we just heard. Actually, no, I'm sorry, the vested right for the church was previous to that. We talked about site plan review for Outer Banks Hospital, the property they have at 4917 South Croatan Highway. You're going to be hearing that shortly. Talked about consideration of text amendments to the U D O as it pertains to supplemental regs for fueling stations within the town, something similar to what we had in the C5. Discussion of text amendments to the U D O as it pertains to the definition of habitable building area. We talked about that at the Board of Commissioners' previous meeting and the more we dug into it, the more time I think we need to make sure we're covering all of our bases. So that'll be going back to the planning board at their May meeting. And we continued our conversation on the definition of dwelling units, accessory structures, and we went ahead and reviewed the A D U regulations that we had presented back in 2019. I will say, as part of the conversation on A D Us, there's some legislation out there, it just passed in the House, from what I understand, that would severely reduce how a local government could regulate accessory dwelling units. In your packet, I gave you a link to the North Carolina general statutes where you can look up the information on this, but essentially, it was going, it's going to allow, if approved, accessory dwellings, one-to-bedroom units within any area in the town zone for residential use. Prohibit local government parking minimums, regulations pertaining to owner occupancy or conditional use zoning. Prohibit local governments from not allowing A D Us to connect to main dwelling utilities and charging fees. Prohibits local governments from passing regulations to deter or discourage A D U development in any way. And it sets a statewide minimum setback at 10 feet. It's previously five, in one of the readings, they did bump that up to 10 feet. So you can learn more about that at this link if you're interested. So that's something that we're absolutely going to have to keep an eye on and I want to think there's a resolution that you're going to talk about later perhaps. The next planning board meeting is May 16th and they've got a full agenda at this time. It's going to include sketch plan review for development of a 2,460-square-foot Starbucks drive-through restaurant at 7100 South Croatan Highway, which outlets Max Head. In conjunction with that, consideration of a text amendment to allow drive-through restaurants within group developments, which is what that development is. Consideration of a text amendment related to the definition of habitable building area, like we just spoke about. Consideration of text amendments to Section 11.10 of the U D O as it relates to discharge of stormwater, pool water, hot tub water, and de-watering effluent in areas of elevated groundwater levels. Lastly, we're going to continue the conversation on accessory dwellings, accessory structures, and A D Us ultimately. So we didn't have anything for the Board of Adjustment this past month. We have nothing coming up in May. For the Septic Health Advisory Committee, there's a lot to report out on with that committee. They had their quarterly meeting on April 25th. We had our two interns from ECU there, Tanaya Johnson and Thomas Shelton. They've been working on some educational materials, talking about maybe creating a clean that can go on toilets and sinks and other things like that, about our program and what you can and should or should not be putting down your sink and toilet. They're also working on a mapping tool so that we can put our water quality results in there and have that come up. So that would be very, I think everybody would enjoy that. I think citizens would appreciate it and obviously it's something we would like to have to keep track of. We have also purchased some giveaways and other educational materials. We haven't really done that in a long time for the Septic Health Initiative Program, so we've finally done that. So we plan to be at the upcoming farmers markets with some information about the Septic Health Program. So have what we need to start doing that. The big conversation that we had at this committee meeting resulted from a situation that you may have heard of down around Lakeside Avenue. We had a property owner who needed to de-water to install an in-ground pool. Well, their land elevation is low and groundwater was high. So when they started needing to pump that water off-site, they did receive permission reluctantly from a property owner to put their pool water into an existing stormwater basin. That basin got full very quickly. It wasn't able to retain all the water and the water started kind of going where water goes, anywhere there's a low spot. So we realize that how we're handling pool installations in low areas with high groundwater, we need to change that. It's going to require some amendments to Section 11.10 of the code as to how we handle it primarily. It's going to be procedurally in-house. So when we see a permit application come through with an in-ground pool, it's going to trigger a lot more questions. So it's just going to be permit issuance. Do you have a de-watering plan? What is your plan? Involvement with our town engineer? And worst-case scenario, much like Lakeside, that water may have to be trucked out. So we're going to initiate the process to start putting those amendments in place and get our procedures revised. So that was a big topic that came out of that committee meeting and I don't know if Commissioner Brinkley would like to say more later on, but it was, it was eye-opening and I'm happy that we know what the problem is now and we can make sure it doesn't happen again. Estreene Shoreline Plan, not a whole lot of changes here. The pre-application for the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant has been submitted. If we're invited to participate further, that'll be due by June 28th. Moving into Phase Four of the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. Provided some background information in your packet there. I had that we had no new updates to the Electrical Vehicle Action Plan, but we just received an email, we did receive the $10,000 grant from D E Q for the Level Two Charger. So that is very exciting. I'll skip over E-Tip, Wellbone. What we have there is, as you know, we did not get the Partif Accessibility for Parks grant, but we are going to move forward with a simple restroom design here, if possible. The Dune Management Cost Share Program, we have maxed out 100% of those funds. Have been used with 99 applicants participating in that. April 30th was our last day for the sand relocation program. Staff has been incredibly busy with this. As of April 26th, we had written 189 sand relocation authorizations. And so staff is out there now following up on those, trying to close out those projects that are more recent. And I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate the planning staff. We did our permit turnaround for the third quarter. Total number of permits for January, February, and March between 77, 87, 94, and we've had less than three-day turnaround. So it's been, it was very exciting to see that and so much appreciation to the planning department for making that happen. The Dog Park, the crushed granite surfacing at the entry. We're anticipating that to be done in early June of this year. And our last item here, the Doughty Park Events Farmers Market. The Art and Culture Committee met, they made their selections for the 2023 Doughty Park Farmers Market. I will say, we came to you requesting about 50-by-vendor spots for this market. When they all came in, just in order to take the producers and consumables, to take the new producers and consumables, and to keep our loyal artisans in there, we had to bump it up to a little over 70. So, which is great, we can manage that. But if Perry's rolling his eyes behind me because of parking concerns. But that is very exciting. And I did want to note that Paige Griffin, our event coordinator, she has successfully gotten several sponsorships for our upcoming Doughty Park season. So I did want to thank Coastal Carolina Vacations and Sales, the OBX Fitness Collective, and Stan White Realty. They're going to be taking care of our fitness and some bands as well. That's very exciting. And this isn't a town event, but the town is participating in the 2023 Art Rages Kids Art Festival. Our Art and Culture Committee will be there, so please come out if you can. It's Saturday, May 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Seers?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear an update on the skate park.
I might have to let the town manager provide the update on the skate park.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work. Y'all are very busy.
Thank you, Kelly. Good report, lot of activities going on. One thing I'd like, and this is just me, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board, but at one point, we talked about kids' artwork on the streets in Gallery Row area.
Yes.
Is that, I'd like to see if some movement could be made forward and get the Art Committee's thoughts on that.
So the Art Committee has discussed maybe doing one of the murals at the crosswalks, having kids participate in an art event like that. So they were, the Art and Culture Committee was very excited about that, so I'll pass that along.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Appreciate the update. The turnaround of the permits is outstanding. Thank you to you and your staff for that hard work. And I appreciate you giving the update on the Septic Health Advisory Committee. We had a great meeting and it is true that we had a very detailed discussion about the de-watering and installation of pools. And thankfully, Ms. Lambert had firsthand account of what was occurring down in that location. So I appreciate town staff working to address that, so hopefully we can mitigate issues in the future.
Yeah, we're moving, moving forward quickly with that one.
Thank you.
No, thank you for all your work and I believe they started yoga in the park yesterday at Doughty Park too.
That's right.
I think that went very well, so yeah, it's exciting, so thank you.
It's going to be every Tuesday moving forward at 7:30, I believe, so.
I think that's right, yeah.
One question, I'm excited to see the slate of concerts that are proposed for the summer, pretty much from the entire time the school's out. It looks like pretty much a weekly concert schedule. And I may have missed this, or misunderstood this. Was there discussion about having some vendors at concerts?
So there, the committee did talk about, that kind of goes back to that 70 at our regular market. So when we were trying to keep the vendors to 50, 55, but wanted the other 20 to have an outlet for their crafts, we did discuss potentially having them show up at our nightly, or our Wednesday night concerts. But we kind of came off of that when we realized that we could just fold them in to our Thursday markets.
Very good.
But I will go ahead and say Paige is exploring a couple of kids' nights as well in the evening and looking at some winter markets even beyond the Christmas, the holiday market. So there's a lot going on.
Yes, there is. Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That brings us, Kelly, don't go away. Brings us consideration of a major site plan for Outer Banks Hospital.
Okay, I apologize. It's always the worst part, but I figure if we can look at it while I talk, that helps. So as you've noted, this is a major site plan review for the property at 4917 South Croatan Highway. The application's been made by Quible and Associates on behalf of Outer Banks Hospital. We do have Brian Rubino with Quible available this morning and of course Amy Montgomery with OVH is here as well. They're looking to construct additional parking at this location. The additional proposed parking is shaded differently. This is all going to be in turf stone. It's about eight parking spaces here. As you pull in off the beach road, this would just be on the east side of the parking that's already there now. The existing property is office with residential above and this is located within the Village Hotel District. As far as flood hazard information goes, there's no structures associated with this, so we don't need to go into that. The use is obviously permitted. Again, this was something that we couldn't look at administratively because of the amount of lot coverage that was being generated and the need for some additional stormwater management. So that elevated it to this major site plan review. There in the Village, lot coverage is broken out a little bit differently. It allows your building area to not exceed 25%. Your parking area shall not exceed 45% and you need to have a minimum of 30% in undisturbed vegetated area. So the lot coverage associated with the building is obviously unchanged, that's at 18%. And the lot coverage associated with the parking area is proposed to be increased from 41% to 43%. So they can be at 45, so they're still compliant there. And the landscaped area would be reduced just slightly to 38%, which is still going to be compliant. Height and architectural design would not need to be reviewed with this application. Parking, Section 10.2 required parking by use. Existing onsite parking is adequate for the office uses as well as the residential above. They technically have what they're supposed to have. This additional parking would just be above and beyond the requirement and perhaps the applicant will talk more about this, but I know in previous conversations, their thought has been having the residential above for visiting doctors, staff, things of that nature. This new parking over here on the east side would be allocated for them while your patients would be able to park around the building. Section 10.92.14, that's where we talk about 20% of your parking area needs to be in a permeable surface. So obviously, they're not going to be able to meet that, but everything new that has been proposed is impermeable. So that's as close to compliant as we're going to get from them at this time, which is wonderful because the permeable aspect is helping the stormwater as well. There is no buffering or landscaping that's associated with the request. There is a required 20-foot landscape buffer here adjacent to NC-12. It's already vegetated quite nicely, but we did recommend and they have agreed that if there's any areas that need to be supplemented, they'll happily do that, so. There's no additional lighting or signage that's been proposed with this. Village is serviced by Carolina Water, but there was no need to have their Septic capacity looked at or reviewed for this particular application. David Ryan, our town engineer, has reviewed traffic circulation, stormwater management, and found compliance in those areas. Fire and Public Works have looked at this as well and find compliance. So staff submits that the proposal is consistent with use and development standards as well as land use policy. And the planning board, when they met on April 18th, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the major site plan amendment as it's been proposed. Try to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Seers?
How many?
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley? Mr. Kenny? Commissioner Seers?
Just one question, very, very minor. What's the difference in lot coverage between the residential Moon Gate portion and that portion that we're talking about? I know it's all in the hotel district. Is it the same lot coverage?
No, so the resi, I don't know the residential off the top of my head, but it is going to be different. Typically, within the Village, the residential piece is going to be 65%, but I'll go check that and get back with you.
Okay, so this is less or more? This is more, right?
For commercial, it's, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be more.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions?
I make a motion to approve as presented. Second?
Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to old business and items tabled from previous meetings and Town Manager Garmin.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have two items we're going to discuss under old business. An update on town beach volleyball courts and red light cameras. And we'll start with the volleyball courts. So at the last meeting, Commissioners heard comments from Mark Welch requesting that the town consider volleyball, beach volleyball courts at some location in the town. He expressed the need and the desire from the community for this type of facility. Mr. Welch is here today in the audience. Board discussed it and asked us to bring back some information on this. I believe the board stated a preference to not look at Doughty, but to look at other facilities. So what we've done is we've looked at Satterfield Landing as a possible facility. I talked to Mark Welch after the meeting and he suggested that, aside from Doughty, that would be a good location for this. And so we have also talked to Dare County because they have facilities at this park, even though it's the town's property. We have an M O U with them and they lease a portion of the park for the existing soccer fields and the concession stand in the parking lot, which they constructed. So we met with the county, mentioned the beach volleyball courts. They were amenable to the beach volleyball courts, thought it was a good idea, but they also hadn't asked. They would like, and the board is aware of this, there's been a lot of discussion about pickleball in the county and they would be more than willing to pay to construct pickleball on this property if we would let them. And so the idea is that we could develop a joint pickleball and beach volleyball area to the east of the existing soccer fields. And so that's what we're basically asking the board to consider. The beach volleyball courts is a fairly simple project, about $6,000 to $8,000. Mark was kind enough to give me a cost estimate for a netting system, sort of a professional system that we could use that could be raised and lowered. And then we could buy some sand and line the courts and make a nice facility. Obviously, the pickleball would be more expensive, and the county has said that they would pay for that. I did sit down with David Ryan and Kelly Wyatt to talk about permitting issues. You know, I think they feel like it needs to go through the site planning process if we pursue this. But they did not see any fatal flaws in permitting process that would prevent this from happening. I'm sure the county would be willing to update the site plan for us, since they were the ones that drew up the original site plan, and that was included in the package. So just want some feedback on whether or not you think this is a good idea. Seems like a good opportunity. The pickle, four pickleball courts is what they're looking for, and those are about the size of two tennis courts. And I've shown the dimensions as best I could on the site plan. And it takes up a portion of that area, but not the entire area. So would happy to answer any questions or entertain discussion.
Commissioner Sears.
I would just, I'll entertain it. I'd like to see what you come up with.
Does it require additional parking?
According to our planning director, no, it does not.
Okay. And if you're talking about buying sand, I'm sure a lot of oceanfront properties would give you the sand out of their driveways. Instead of having to still move it in their driveways, I'm sure there's plenty of readily accessible sand.
They'd haul it. I mean, they'd load it and haul it.
They'd pile it up. All the town would have to do is take their dump truck and they'd put it in there.
I think they'd be willing to put it in a truck and bring it to us, some of them.
That property's in the V-zone, right?
Commissioner Brinkley.
I certainly support the volleyball courts. As far as the pickleball goes, is that something that the county will one, maintain, and two, are they going to do a reservation system, or is it going to be open to play?
I'd have to follow up on that to see how they would like to manage it. I think they do reservations for some of their other facilities, so I would imagine that they might. But we would hope that it wouldn't take up the entire town.
I would be in favor of it not being able to be reserved, that it would just be for open play.
Open play.
Just speaking for my, speaking for myself.
Well, I'll certainly ask that question.
Because I can easily see being reserved and...
And I don't know if the county has a pickleball league as part of their adult programming, so I can find all that out anyway.
Yep, Commissioner Sanders.
No, I think it's a great idea, you know. I'm all in favor for it, and I would like to thank Mr. Welch for all he did to move this forward. So I appreciate it.
It appears to be an opportunity, and, you know, it sounds like you're getting consensus for pursuing this. And it seems like an opportunity for Nagshead to do a lot for the larger community at very little cost to the town, which is, which is, which is good because we have the facility available. So I look forward to seeing how this progresses.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Red lights.
Red lights, okay. So we've had a lot of comments recently about red light cameras and people in town running red lights. Obviously, red light cameras are something that most people think of when they, when they think of this problem. The town has looked into this issue at least on two occasions. I believe one in the early two thousands and again in twenty sixteen when Commissioner Brinkley was police chief. And recent research sort of illustrates the problems with this, that is, it is, there are significant obstacles to doing this in North Carolina, and it has to do with the state constitution. And Chief and Deputy Chief, and John Leidy and I had a call about this. Chief and Deputy Chief collected a lot of information. I read some of it, and there's some recent court cases that illustrate this. So I think Deputy Chief Montgomery's going to get up and summarize this for you, and then we can have a little discussion about it.
I'd be happy to if I could get the memo to come up. The red light camera memo. There you go. Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. As Andy mentioned, this topic was brought up recently, and it's been researched a few times in the past. We just want to give a brief overview about the program's history as it pertains here in Nagshead and some of the challenges they present. The use of red light camera system in the town of Nagshead was initially explored over twenty years ago after session bill was introduced in two thousand and one. That session bill specifically named Nagshead is one of several cities and counties within the state of North Carolina that were permitted to use these systems. Shortly after the session bill and some municipalities started implementing the systems, a lawsuit was filed against the city of High Point, which effectively terminated most agencies' participation in these programs by placing restrictions on the amount of funds that could be recouped by the operating entity. The program's been researched several times, as Andy mentioned, and the following contributors continue to be challenges to the utilization of red light cameras here in the town of Nagshead. To begin with, as was mentioned, North Carolina Constitution. By statute in North Carolina, the clear proceeds from all forfeitures and fines must be turned over to the school board. Through some of these court cases, clear proceeds have been defined as, I believe, at least ninety percent. Is that correct? While cameras are very prominent in other states, you can go up to the Tidewater, Virginia, and Maryland, Delaware, and you can see them quite prominently. We're not certain that they are under the same restrictions that are implemented here by the North Carolina Constitution. System operation in itself is a challenge. Agencies must utilize a subscription-type service through an independent contractor or just purchase the systems completely outright and operate them on themselves. Essentially, you can just lease it from a company. They'll provide the service for you, keep billing you monthly, or you can just completely do it on your own. Then there's the civil litigation aspect that's taken place. When we last looked into this in two thousand and sixteen, there were four agencies in the state of North Carolina that were using them. Now it's down to two. The only two remaining municipalities in North Carolina to have these systems are the city of Wilmington, who just had a suit filed against them in the summer of twenty-two, and the city of Raleigh, which apparently the same law firm that was involved in the Wilmington suit is now seeking plaintiffs to initiate a suit against the city of Raleigh as well. There's a group based out of the greater Raleigh area that's been in existence for several years that kind of has been challenging a lot of these systems, trying to discredit them, and they're also behind some of these suits. Another challenge would be the support systems and infrastructures. Cameras may be affixed to traffic light poles, as you had seen in past and other locations. Within the town of Nagshead, the traffic light poles are actually owned by Department of Transportation, as opposed to some of the other area larger cities like the ones in Wilmington and Raleigh. They're owned by the cities themselves. And then, of course, there's the cost. I recently reached out, again, to the company that does provide the service for the city of Wilmington. If you use their lease service, the average to do one site, all four directions, just one intersection, was twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And that's a month?
That's a month for one intersection. That's the average. Happy to try and answer any questions y'all might have.
I think he just answered the question.
I think he's answered. You know, the board, I think, may be aware, the board asked Commissioner Brinkley and I to meet with the board of the Dare County Education. And we did that along with Superintendent a couple of weeks ago. And I had read some of the articles that are being referenced in advance of that and seen the ninety percent, seen and come to understand the ninety percent figure, which makes it extremely difficult or almost impossible by itself. Because you just, you can't, you can't fund the system and meet that bar, sort of no matter what else happens. Any questions for Chris?
No, I mean...
You know what, what is probably appropriate, I mean, the at least for now, it sounds like the red light camera is sort of, is a dead issue. And it's just, there's not really a way forward in North Carolina for us to do that. So we need to look at other mechanisms that communities are using with their own forces. You know, education, targeted enforcement, signage, you know, using your message boards. And, you know, just, just look at what communities are doing successfully and figure out where, find their way forward. Commissioner Sears.
And discuss it with DOT and have them lengthen the time between the yellow light turning red and the green light turning green. It's too quick.
Can they do that, though?
That man standing can probably tell you whether they can or can't.
My understanding, I've talked to them when I started making contacts with DOT back during storms and stuff so we could have a little bit better response from the police department side of it, that these are set. I'm not sure if it's by a general statute or something with an engineer. They can be within ninety seconds, and I think the least amount, it could be ninety seconds, the least amount that it would go before it triggers, and it could go maybe to two minutes. Or it's either sixty and ninety, I think, from the delay. But it said each yellow light is set the same, from what I understood. Now, this was a few years back when I was talking to them, trying to understand these signals and for us resetting the lights when they go out to a power issue or anything else. But the yellow lights were all set to same, the way I understood. I don't know if they're all set the same in a general area throughout the state, or is it one area, depending on roadway and traffic flow, has a set time? But I can reach back out to find some more information about that. I did reach out to DOT for crash statistics to see if they matched ours for intersections. From those, I went back to two thousand and twenty. Within an intersection that's defined by statute with the general statute of if you run a red light within the stop bars, there have been forty-seven crashes since two thousand and twenty. Out of those forty-seven, twenty-five have been a red light violation. The other twenty-two were someone turning in front of somebody at the yellow light, turning out onto the roadway, thinking they had enough time to pull out onto one fifty-eight and then get struck that way. There are numerous crashes that are close to them, but they're just rearing in slower stop due to people already stopped for the red lights. They gave me about sixty-some pages of information from the red lights that they run by Latin longs. They did highlight them for me, the ones that were in the intersections, and they get the information from my crash reports. Looking at the speeds, which would be a speed that an officer would estimate due to crush from a vehicle, along with skid marks that we measure, it can get a minimum speed. Of course, the minimum speeds that we always do give the benefit to the driver. The speeds listed were consistent around forty-five miles per hour, maybe fifty miles per hour, I think, is the top one that I saw for intersection crash. Now, we have some speeds from the rear and slower stops that officers have estimated at fifty-five, where people were just not paying attention and run right into the back of somebody on those crashes. But the ones at the intersections were around forty-five miles per hour through the majority of them. I ran numbers for the bike pad that you saw this morning. That was back five years, those eleven hundred crashes. I can tell you that our crash data for all crashes have gone down since two thousand and eighteen. Last year was down about twenty percent. We had two hundred and fifteen crashes last year. In two thousand and eighteen, we had two hundred and sixty-five. From two thousand and twenty-one, it went down to two thousand and twenty-two, about seven percent decrease. Two hundred and thirty-one in two thousand and twenty-one, and again, that two hundred and fifteen number from last year. This year, so far, we've had five crashes within an intersection. It seems like January was the month that people weren't paying attention to the lights, as most of them were in January. That is about two off from the previous years up until this point right here, to the last week of April for crashes that we were seeing. So we're two above previous years on those crashes. But for looking at ways to combat this, combat this, excuse me, I did pull some data. Over the last three years, we've written a hundred and nine specific red light violation citations. That does not include any warnings whatsoever. Like I explained at the last meeting, that stop bar mark, if it's kind of close, I know officers will stop and still issue a warning ticket. Those numbers do not include any warning tickets. That was just a hundred and nine specific red light violation citations that were issued on a criminal offense. We are, we'll put our message board out with a message up there. Try to figure out some catchy phrases to put up there for red light violations, like the "don't drink and drive booze it, lose it", something of that nature to specifically target red lights. I'm just making sure our message board is, we just got it back from the shop a couple of weeks ago. I'm getting ready to deploy it out, since we've got a car show coming up this weekend, and we'll put it out on the causeway. That will be radar activated as well with a message up there. Of course, I set the speed. It will flash for people to slow down. I can't put what I want to put up there for tell them to slow down, but it will say "slow down" if they go over a certain speed. Also, we send out directives to target specific areas for traffic. Could be in neighborhoods, could be as anything else. So we're putting messages out to our staff. You know, if you're on the side of the road doing a report, be seen, sitting near an intersection, something like that, to pay attention to those intersections, more than what they are doing. I will see if I've got some overtime funds to bring some people in on days off to see if they just want to target red lights in general and not take calls and just specifically work red lights for a couple hours here and there throughout the week, if I can deem that to be appropriate.
Hey, Danielle.
I just asked the town manager, write to the people that, former Mayor Mueller, that expressed it in the boardroom, and to Mr. Buxton that expressed in a letter, what the board has decided, and based on the cost that we had, which would be over a million and some dollars even for four cameras.
Yes, thank you.
I'll just say, next time you talk to DOT, ask them, you know, if they would replace that Radio Shack Tandy two thousand that they've got running traffic control, they could probably do a much better job. I mean, a couple thousand dollars, they can get a faster computer than the one they got, apparently.
Yes, sir.
That may be before his time.
That reference may have actually been so old, it went over some people's heads.
Just the chief.
Your cellphone has more power than a Tandy two thousand computer had, by a lot.
The next item on our agenda are the committee reports, and so I will start with Commissioner Sanders.
Nothing to add today.
All right.
We were talking about the subject health, and nothing urgent here.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. I'll just say, we've had a couple of bumps in our regular monthly mayor's meetings. We are going to get back on schedule here in a couple of weeks, here with our next meeting in Duck. I think that's about it for me. Commissioner Kenny.
Nothing.
Commissioner Sears.
Just want to bring attention to the tourism boards having a public meeting to discuss long-range management plan that they have to continue tourism, and that'll be on the twenty-fourth at five-thirty at the Ramada.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. So I will ask Chief Hale to come back again for an amendment to the traffic control map regarding Admiral Street.
Good morning again. This is just a request to amend the traffic control map on Admiral Street on the north side. We already have the south side of the street deemed no parking. Over the past few months, specifically a few weeks ago, we've seen some increase of parking. There was an incident where a vehicle was towed. That vehicle was parked in the middle of the travel lane, so that wouldn't have anything to do with the no parking. But he did not understand why it was towed, because he didn't see any signs. With the amount of traffic in the area, the beach access across the street, the delicious ice cream shop at the corner, and then the traffic that is coming from food line, et cetera, I would just recommend that be consistent on both sides of the street there to prevent any unnecessary traffic issues or visibility issues with pedestrians that are back and forth.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Chief? No? Okay, thank you. In that case, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Mr. Leidy.
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is the request for a closed session to discuss the sawgun litigation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, items referred to and presentations from the town manager, starting with the community survey.
Okay, I just wanted to give the board a brief update on where we are. As you know, we budgeted funds... As you know, we budgeted funds this current year to do a community survey. It's something we haven't done in a long time. We've done surveys about specific topics. You know, we did a survey about Doughty Park when we were trying to develop the park. We've done, we've done, we've done surveys about a number of planning topics. However, we've not done a comprehensive survey since, I think, 2006. And I included a copy of that in your packet. You'll notice that it's signed by a person currently on the board. Commissioner Cahoon was, I believe, the mayor then. And that survey was done in conjunction with a land use plan update. And at the time, the feeling was we needed to get a widespread opinion on a lot of various issues. And so it was successful. We got about a thousand responses, and it was very informative to some of our future efforts. So we feel like we need to do this again, is the reason why we put this in our CIP. Our goal this time would be to conduct the survey and use it in the fall when we do a retreat to help inform our strategic plan. And so we need to get started on this. We've identified a vendor to help us with this, and they do a lot of work with small and large communities all over the country, including coastal communities. We've talked to them several times, and they have an online platform that they use to present the results. You can also fill the survey out online, but the survey would be done via mail with paper surveys. And there's a process they use to solicit responses, covering a wide range of topics. And they have a lot of experience, so they can help us drill down into questions based on the topics we're interested in. And we think it would include the topics we've included in your memo, and anything else you'd like to ask. Certainly, land use is always a big topic. You know, this idea of accessory dwelling units is something we've been talking about, as well as housing. I can imagine a number of questions about those topics, and also town services, and also customer service, things we can ask in this survey. So we would ask the board to sort of think about some of the questions you'd like to ask, and how we might go about putting together the survey document. I do think that this survey needs to be the work of the board, not something that you would probably put off to another group. And these are, these are, these are questions that you're asking the community that you're going to use directly to inform your future strategic plan and budget. So I think, I think you guys need to be heavily involved in putting together the questions that should be asked. And so, and I would suggest that we, we start working on a framework, an outline for the survey, and coming up with a list of topic areas, and a list of potential questions, and possibly just circulating this to the board for feedback. And then, once we get a little bit better list of questions, sort of a draft and a framework, maybe we bounce this off the planning board and then bring them back to the board. And so maybe we can do that over the course of the next six weeks. Our goal would be to complete this process in about twenty weeks. And so we'd have it sometime in September. So that, that's the timeline. The proposal we've received, they recommend doing it based on a sample, a geographic sample, and not mailing it to the whole community. In 2006, we mailed it to the whole community. They proposed to mail it to about three thousand addresses, but it would be geographically representative of the whole community. We can certainly mail it to everyone. That would impact the cost, and it would cause the project to go over budget. And so that's something that I'd like your feedback on. But right now, what they would propose is that we send it out to a geographic sample of three thousand properties in the town, and it would be, we would help select those. And then they would also solicit survey responses online. And anybody could go to the online platform and fill out the survey, even if you did not get a mailed copy. And then we could also send postcards to all the town property owners to send them to the website to fill out the survey. So there's a variety of ways we could get it to everybody, but the mailed version would be the sample. So that is the proposal we have. So one question would be, you know, do we spend the extra money to send the mailed survey to everybody? Or can we, can we live with the sample, but putting it out to everybody via the internet? And through postcard notifications? And we would also solicit engagement through our newsletter. I think we're going to do a mailed newsletter here within the next month, talking about the budget and other topics. And so, and we would put it out on social media to let people know what's going on. So it's going to take us at least a month or more, probably six weeks, to come up with a question. So it's going to be a good two months before it really, you know, it's ready to be mailed out. So anyway, that is, that is essentially the summary of what we plan to do, and would certainly like your feedback or discussion about it.
Commissioner Sears.
I'd be fine if you used your newsletter, your electronic newsletter, instead of just mailing out three thousand and adding to that on top of it.
I would like everybody to have a chance to participate. And if you're talking about three thousand as a sample, if those people decide to participate online, would they still be counted as part of the sample and their responses recorded?
They have a way to identify if you've already responded, but, you know, if you've gotten a mailed survey and you filled it out and sent it back in, hopefully they wouldn't try to fill it out twice. If you didn't get a mailed survey, you would get a postcard in the mail that says, please go to a certain website to go fill out the survey. So you wouldn't get a mailed copy to fill out, but you'd get a postcard telling you to fill it out.
I guess my question would be, those people that do not get a mailed survey and go online, they will still be counted, their responses would still be accounted for?
Yes, they would. And obviously, this, the product is a report that she would receive.
I just worry about, if you do three thousand, you're going to miss a lot of responses.
Commissioner.
Just that they have multiple ways to be able to do it. I want to capture as much as you possibly can.
I'd be interested to know if they've done this before, how good their response was to the mailed surveys compared to the electronic surveys.
Yeah, I mean, they indicated that the response rate is about as good as what we got in 2006, so usually about twenty percent response rate.
For the mailed?
For the mailed, just typically, this is the process that they follow routinely. So when they, when they put together a proposal, they usually do this through a sample, and it's always mailed, because they feel like their response rate is better with the mailed surveys than it is if it's just online.
But you're talking about doing some electronic, and you haven't, do they have a, do they have a statistic between the responses of electronic and mail?
I think they would be able to parse those out.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. That'd be good.
You know, I don't know, I mean, I appreciate, appreciate the concern about sending out so many mailings. I would love to have a response from everybody. I mean, and I think that should be our goal. I mean, it's not a realistic goal. You're not going to get everybody to respond. But I would love to see a response from everyone. And I know there are always people who, after it's all over, say, well, I didn't know anything. You know, you publish the results, and they say, well, I didn't know anything about the survey. I didn't get one, I didn't, I didn't see it, didn't hear it. I'm kind of wondering if there's a way to, to respond in their process to that, where we sort of, I don't know, sort of a false closure to the, to the process, where you, you know, you would make people think the opportunity had ended, and all of a sudden, they would decide to weigh in. You know, I don't know. I would just, I'd use every tool I could, and every tool the consultant can offer us, to try to get as, as full a response as possible. I, you know, I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know what that recommendation would be. But I just, I would really like, and it sounds like we will, but I just really want us to make sure that...
My feeling going into this was that the board would want to send it to everybody. But if we want to do that, that's about eight thousand dollars more.
Right.
Because you've got three thousand in the postage, and then they have to enter the responses and all that stuff. We can do that? I mean, I think we can handle that. And if that's, that kind of takes the ambiguity out of this a little bit. I mean, everybody gets a mailed survey, everybody gets a postcard, everybody's treated the same.
Yeah.
It's up to y'all.
I don't know. I mean, I'm not necessarily asking for that, I'm just...
Personally, and this is just from, just my experience, me personally, I'm more apt to fill out something online, and to fill something out and mail it back.
I think your return on investment's better online than it is in postcards.
I think that's, that's probably true.
You know, when you get it, and what we did in 2006, is you mail it out, but you put return postage on it, so all they have to do is put a piece of tape on it and stick it up in the mail. They don't have to pay any postage or anything, and that's pretty convenient.
But you're getting twenty percent back, so eighty percent of that's wasted dollars.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
So I don't think you have to mail it to everybody. Let's just, let's just use every other tool we've got to try to drive the response.
Very good, now we'll proceed.
If I may take the liberty here, on the agenda, I see that Mr. White is here, and have a sense that your recommended budget presentation may take a few minutes. So does the board mind if we switch those two and go ahead and address the item I two? I'm sorry, not item I two, item K three.
Three.
Name? All right, very good. Then let's move on to that, if we, if we may. And so who am I calling up? Is this, is this a Kelly or is this a you?
It's just me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So actually, several years ago, I believe in 2017, Stan had reached out to me asking about whether or not we had claim to the right-of-way through these properties. And so at the time, we agreed to ask Robert Hobbs, one of the partners in our, one of the attorneys in our firm, if he could evaluate that for us, and we would, we would accept the response to that. So he did that and determined that, yes, it's, it's the town's right-of-way. And so the process from there would be then to request that the town vacated if, you know, if they did not want it through their property. It's, it's at the very end of Old Nag's Head Woods Road. I think y'all are familiar with this area. And it terminates at the northern end of the parking lot in the Villas condos. And, you know, I think it's an old historical right-of-way. It's been there for a long time, and I think that this used to connect further, maybe behind Jockey's Ridge, and even further south. And so essentially, Mr. White is, and Mrs. Farr, Louise Farr is another property owner there, have asked if the town would consider vacating this portion of the right-of-way through their property. And before we put anything together for you formally, we wanted to see if there was any interest in the board in considering this, or what the discussion might be.
I've had the privilege to walk in that property, which is unpassable. You know, on paper, it's town's property physically. The property owners can do whatever they want. We're never going to, we don't maintain it, we don't do anything about it. So I don't, I don't know the benefit or the disadvantage to either side of that.
I looked at the pictures, you're right, the town has not maintained it. I hate to give away town property. It's just not in me to necessarily vacate, because you never know what will happen in the future. But if the town's going to keep it, we need to do some maintenance to it.
Commissioner.
We obviously have not maintained it. If that's going to continue, then we ought to go ahead and release it. If we want to keep it, then maintain it.
Kind of with Commissioner Sears, I don't really see the benefits or the disadvantage. I'm not sure. It starts at Old Nag's Head Road and goes to the parking lot.
In some places, it separates a swamp from a swamp.
Yeah.
We obviously hadn't done anything to it.
Well, and I mean, I would ask the question in terms of not ever, you know, not able to predict the future, but wondering what the value is. I mean, it is now paralleled by Villa Dunes. So, and it's, you know, a hundred feet away. Are we really benefited by keeping it?
I don't know. I mean, I'd like to have staff bring back a recommendation. I haven't seen that recommendation come forward.
Well, yeah, we don't really have a, don't really have a recommendation from them, because I guess the question is, do we need to go through the effort to, to make a recommendation, which I guess would mean it would go through planning board perhaps to come back to us?
We haven't typically taken it through planning board, but we can certainly do, make a recommendation, do an analysis of it.
Well...
And also, while you're doing a recommendation, figure the square footage and the additional tax burden on both parties. So they're fully aware, if we give up that space that they could or could not be using it, unknowing to us, how much it's going to cost them tax-wise? Just to be fair and clear and open, transparent?
Yeah, I guess I would, I would ask, and it sounds like we are essentially asking staff that, that it's an open issue, and that we could act on a recommendation one way or whichever way that staff recommended. And we could either, either accept that recommendation or do something else. But I think understanding the, the issues that may arise from looking at this one last time, because if we vacated, it is one last time that we're looking at it. And, and hopefully, you know, have something we can take a vote on, put it to bed.
Can you also add in the properties to the north that this same road vacates that's unpassable?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I thought you would just keep going. I didn't think for you to stop.
I'm not going to present.
You wouldn't have gotten very far before I got back.
All right, well, here we are. So as you can see, Amy just passed out the budget document to you. And there's also a few attachments. Normally, we include our pay plan revisions. And you also have a proposed career progression program, which we're going to talk about in a... which we're going to talk about in a little bit. So appreciate the opportunity to present the FY two thousand and twenty-four budget, based on the process we've been using to review major initiatives with the board during the planning process and also during our fall retreat. Hopefully, what is being presented today shouldn't come as a surprise, as a surprise to the board. Really, this budget has been a work in progress over the past two years. The driving force behind the changes between this year's budget and last year is the public services project and the replacement of our water meters with a digital metering system. The board is very familiar with the Public Works project. We've been getting a lot of information out there about that and what that entails. The smart meter project, that's essentially replacing all the water meters in the town with digital meters that can be read remotely via a wireless network, which would give us real-time data. And the biggest benefit to that system for, for the customer is it more accurately, accurately reads the usage and can inform of leaks in the system in real time, even on their side of the meter. And we can, we can let them know about that and have them shut it off before they incur a large charge from a leak. Over the past year, the board has held a number of strategic and financial planning sessions with our staff, our financial consultants, Doug and Andrew Carter, and our project team to determine how we would pay for these projects. Last year at this time, we had completed a master plan for the Public Works complex, which included cost estimates and a financial forecast for capital needs for five years and beyond. This led to the adoption of a new capital investment fund, which offers a more comprehensive strategy to fund many of our infrastructure and equipment needs. During these discussions, we acknowledged that a future tax increase would be necessary to pay the debt service on the Public Works facility. Planning continued over the course of FY two thousand and twenty-three. We received bids on our new facility in December. Together, the public services project and the water meter replacements represented a nine million dollar public financing for which the town sold limited obligation bonds in February. We are now recommending a four point two five cent tax increase to balance the budget. This will largely be used to pay for the debt service on these projects. We are also recommending a twelve point three percent water rate increase to pay for the water fund portion of the debt service. Again, this shouldn't come as a surprise. We've been modeling this for you for the last year, and we felt like, and I, and I think you agree, that everyone was committed to this, and so that's essentially what it takes to complete this. Just as a reference, for those watching, a property valued at five hundred thousand dollars would realize an additional two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents per year with this tax increase. And for the average water customer, this, this rate increase would equal approximately eight dollars every two months. The Nags Head tax rate is currently twenty-eight point seven five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The proposed increase would bring the FY twenty-four tax rate to thirty-three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. In the manager's message, I included all the tax rates in Derry County currently. I have a feeling that some of the other communities are also going to raise taxes this year. Currently, we're not, we're definitely not the highest, but this increase, we still wouldn't be the highest. Mania would. We'd, we'd be one cent higher than Killable Hills is this year, but I have a feeling that some of these other communities may be doing this as well, especially given the, in light of the cost of living increases we've seen over the last few years. We recognize this represents a substantial request from the Nags Head community. This is the largest vertical construction project in our history, according to David Ryan, and one we hope to be proud of for sixty-plus years. As stated previously, it is the operational hub of our largest department, one that impacts us all daily and provides the most visible level of service to our town and visitors. Much like beach nourishment, which also required significant additional resources, this is a foundational project for our community and not something we would ask for often. Regarding some other highlights of the proposed budget, we continue to recommend a fairly aggressive approach, what we, which we believe is the, meets the board's following four major goals. Number one, our team, making sure Nags Head continues to be a great place to work, and we can recruit and retain a great staff, which we certainly have. We are recommending a six point five percent cost of living adjustment for both the general fund and water fund employees. We are going to continue to budget within grade increases as we have. We're implementing, as I said, a career progression program for all departments, and we, we are recommending bringing the 401K contribution for non-sworn staff to five percent. Number two, maintaining infrastructure, much of which is aging. We've been developing plans and implementing replacement and maintenance schedules for our streets, drainage water infrastructure, as well as beaches, parks, buildings, and other town assets. So these projects this year would include the public services and water meter, meter projects. We'll continue paving on South Memorial Avenue between Bitter and Eighth Street. We're going to be replacing asbestos cement lines in this area as well. We're going to be continuing to work on our thirty-year beach nourishment master plan. We're not proposing to change the townwide MSD tax rate or the town-wide tax rate for beach nourishment. Last year, we created a new management cost share program that's been very popular. We're proposing to, to continue with that. And we, we're going to be replacing the Lagerhead Beach Walkover, and we're going to be applying for a CAMA grant to build a new walkover at Governor's Street. Additionally, we received grant funds in the past for the upstream street bathhouse. We're going to put that back out to bid for the fall, and we're including an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for that to supplement what we think are going to be cost increases over when we had originally planned that project. So that is included. Town plans to seek grant funds from the tourism board to construct sidewalks. David walked the board through our pedestrian committee's recommendations several months ago. So right now, the budget includes two projects, one on East Epstein, Epstein Street, one on South Sea Chase Drive. Additional work on pathways. We're looking at now a four-year phased approach to, to maintaining the beach road multi-use path from Whalebone to Eighth Street. We're looking at doing the first phase of this, this coming year, which would include from Lakeside to, to, I believe, Enterprise. That's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar project which is in there. We're also going to include fifty thousand dollars to continue to repair concrete sections of path in South Nags Head, and none of the thirty thousand dollars for multi-use path bulkhead repairs. We have an annual contract to maintain our water towers. That's included eighty-one thousand dollars. Number three, on our list of board goals, replacement schedules for equipment. Previously, we were in a pattern of deferring equipment during the recession. However, we have seen the negative consequences of that, and the board is interested in maintaining that replacement schedule to keep things on track, to limit downtime during the summer season. We're replacing several large pieces of rolling stock next year, including several, including several sanitation trucks and passenger trucks and equipment for several divisions. I will note that the board has already approved, two weeks ago, what we had in, had in the replacement schedule for the police department for five new vehicles. That was paid for with unspent funds from the CIF, which certainly demonstrates the power of that new tool. Number four, revenue seeking, and this is Amy's area here. We have a grant strategy led by our staff and a consultant, and thanks to Amy, David, Kelly, and Kate, we've been successful this year in receiving a number of grants to help stretch the Nags Head tax dollar. Since last year, we have been awarded three point seven million dollars in grants because of this approach. And we have applied for or anticipating applying for several other grants as part of this. Coming up would be an additional four hundred thousand dollars for an update to our stormwater master plan, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar golden leaf grant to supplement what we were planning to do in Old Nags Head Place, ninety-eight thousand dollars to replace the pier and gazebo at the Esperance site on the Causeway, and eighty-six thousand dollars to do the walkover at Governor's Street I mentioned previously. So in terms of services, we had a successful first year last year with our cult cart rollback service. We're under contract again for that. We're not proposing any changes. As I've said before, we've already sent out the letter to those owners. The opt-out process is underway, and the service has begun, and we're not recommending any changes to those fees. We continue to host several town-sponsored activities at Doughty Park, which Kelly goes over every month. The summer, summer farmers markets, the winter holiday markets, concerts, exercise classes, family movie nights, and other activities. And the board took steps last year to increase our capacity to manage those events by adding our staff person Paige Griffin, which has been hugely helpful. We also have a sponsorship program, which Kelly mentioned earlier, and that is now starting to take hold. As you know, for Ocean Rescue, we've continued to evaluate our wages for the, for that staff in order to bring them in and keep them later. We increased our wages for Ocean Rescue from sixteen to eighteen as the minimum base salary, and we've included some additional incentives to keep them longer in the season, increased our end-of-season bonus for the guards from two hundred to six hundred, and for the life of the supervisors to a thousand. They're required to work six hundred hours to get that, and then there's some additional incentives for them. And we're also going to continue to provide those services later into the season. Last year, I believe, we provided an ocean rescue presence in, in the entire month of October. Regarding public safety, we're recommending two new positions in the police department. The town has not added staff in that department for more than twenty years. Additionally, with seasonal and non-seasonal growth and the increased demands on our staff, including the significant increase in events, we believe these positions are warranted and will be, will be well utilized. This should also reduce the number of overtime hours the department has utilized in, in recent years, and the total cost of these positions is about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, including salary and benefits. We've also budgeted approximately twenty-four thousand dollars in the fire department in order to create a part-time pool so they can help bring in, help fill some of the shifts that, that are open and, and and certainly in peak periods when staff take leave to, to fill some of the gaps in, in staffing. And this is something they've mentioned to me in the past, and we're going to try and experiment this with this year. What that would do is allow us to bring in off-duty professional firefighters from other local agencies and pay them. And obviously, we wouldn't be paying them the overtime rate, which we would pay our staff if we were short-staffed. So to summarize, with, with the addition of the capital investment fund and this year's public financing, which involved the town receiving a double A one rating for Moody's, we continue to improve the town's capacity, both financially and strategically. We know this is a big ask this year. However, the major projects we are conducted are, conducting are foundational projects, which will strengthen our service capacity for years to come. Hopefully, this meets your expectations and reflects the priorities and vision you've established for the Nags Head community. Finally, I would like to close by expressing my utmost gratitude to the staff who developed the budget and assisted through the budgeting and strategic planning process. Specifically, I would like to thank Deputy Town Manager Finance Director Amy Miller, Deputy Finance Director Brooke Norris, Public Information Officer Roberta Thumann, Human Resources Director Jan Milke, and the department heads and departmental staff. We will have a budget workshop at our May mid-month meeting, which is May seventeenth, which I assume that you will recess to today. We weren't really planning on having much discussion today. Again, hopefully, what you'll be reading is not going to be a surprise to you based on some of our previous discussions. And I can certainly answer any questions now, but we would plan to continue this at the next meeting. Thank you.
Any questions for the manager?
None for me.
All right. I see none. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate this.
And our budget workshop's the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Is that the only one?
I think so. I think that is going to be the only, I mean, unless we just don't get through it. Thank you. That brings us now to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and Commissioner Cahoon, you have a, an item.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for the board's consideration is the Government Education Access Channel proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. If you'll notice that funding from the state has, is decreasing pretty much each year, and we're using some of fund balance to balance the budget. However, that can, cannot continue every year from now on. There will be discussion in the future as well about proposed changes for the grant funding that comes to each town. And with an, has not been acted upon, but there will be a discussion item of that money's will be, should be used for programming and not just equipment purchases. Everybody started using it for equipment, and funding of videos is not occurring, so that's just an item for your, to be aware of. But anyway, if anybody has any questions about the budget, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. If not, but I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor to adopt the budget.
Second. A motion in a second to adopt the budget. Is there any further discussion? I, I just want to say how much I appreciate the funding that we get through, through this mechanism. Appreciate what the town has been able to do with this. And those videos that we produce help us inform our, our public.
They do.
And they are, and, and our staff has done, along with our consultants, and the staff from the Access Channel have done an excellent, very professional job on these projects.
We have really good staff. We're fully staffed. We have two members over there, and they do a good job. They're out doing videos, and they'd be glad to help in any way with the towns, of course.
Yes.
I think we put in a thousand dollars each year and we get five thousand dollars back in funding. We were getting ten at one point, but that had to be cut because of budgetary concerns. So I think our return on investment's pretty good.
Very good. Very good. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right. Thank you. Are there other items from any commissioners? Commissioner Sears?
After the week that I've had and different citizen responses, and after the talks that we've had at two different locations today, I think the, we need to look at our commercial parking ordinance and maybe other parking ordinances to eliminate this future under-parking problem that we're having at locations. So if board requests, I'd like to request the staff look into that.
Thank you.
Can I follow up with that?
Yes.
Specifically, you look at staff parking. We don't account for staff parking on some commercial developments, and I think we need to. And if we're on that topic, I think we have a parking problem already at the new Blue Moon. It's great that I'm glad they're busy, but I think that we need to further take up some no parking on Highway Twelve. With that, we've, we've already targeted Dove Street, and I'm not sure all our parking signs got put back up after construction. Seems to be a little skimpy in there. But I'm not saying park signs by us. I'm saying some of them disappeared during construction. But I think we need to ask staff to bring back something at our May meeting with no parking on Highway Twelve, after the police chief takes a look at it.
He, he's actually been talking to me about this already. He had, he'd sort of put together in his mind what we would do, and I'm not sure if you want him to go ahead and talk about that a little bit.
I'm perfectly happy for him to go ahead and talk about that. Thank you.
I had phone calls this weekend, and I saw some issues, and staff addressed those. And then afterwards, we had phone calls about the tickets that were written for parking violations. And as many of you know, I don't like headaches. I wanted to get ahead of this. From the signs that were there, looking at the town sign inventory map that was completed in May of two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, both sides of the street had already been deemed no parking. There were three on the south side and three on the north side. After construction, et cetera, there are only two on the north side. One, as soon as you turn off of NC twelve, and the other one about thirty to forty feet before you get to US one fifty-eight. In, in my mind, they say no parking, and then no parking, so that means that the whole area is no parking, but others don't see it that way and thought that it was only around the signs. I believe we writ, wrote seven parking violations, and we have fielded three so far. People calling said it wasn't clear. I've already contacted Public Works. Staff there has gone back out and placed signs where I marked with paint. There are four signs now on the north side. I don't see how it could be any clearer for violations not to continue there. If they do park there, citations and auto and will, will happen. Friday night, this is a Saturday night photo here after Friday night, so I think they thought that, being that they couldn't park there, that they could back up in there, and then that no parking meant from that sign back towards NC twelve. then that no parking meant from that sign back towards NC-12. I'm not sure if that portion of the roadway right there is part of the stormwater process or program there from the ditch that was up by the restaurant itself, and that had been sited, and this had not, so there's still loose sand, et cetera, right there in the swell ditch, whatever it may be called. And then Friday night, that's Saturday night also, this is on NC-12. Now, Saturday night, there was an event at both Haven and then Blue Moon was open for operation as well. I think those vehicles there were mainly from the Haven event going on. The Friday night was fewer cars that were parked. If you could pull up the one that says Friday night? This one didn't understand why it was no parking, said there were no signs, but the bumper's almost touching the four-by-four post on that picture right here. There are two signs now, as soon as you turn off of twelve, in between the short distance for that first exit only, and then there are two signs from the next section where the ditch is not there, one right towards the middle of the ditch, and then one closer to the bypass, but moved it further back from where it was. There's a mailbox there also that will help prevent people from trying to squeeze in that area. From seeing the issues this weekend and to prevent anything further, so my recommendation would be to deem no parking on NC-12 on the west side, from Dove Street north to Danube, excuse me, north to the Cavalier, and then south to Danube Street. I would also, being that it's already deemed no, no parking, is just make contact with Public Works and issue some signs out on the bypass so it doesn't push people to the bypass as well, because I think that would be inviting, it's a grass area right there for people to walk and try to come around as well. I'm glad they're busy. Great place. I had lunch there the other day, but the parking seems to be an issue. I fielded a phone call and an email yesterday, I believe. The planning director filed the same email, spoke to the gentleman that had a concern there, and I told him I would have preparations to make recommendations to deem NC-12 no parking on the west side right there in the heat. Yes, oh yeah, crosswalk.
Are we also talking to the property owners and management to tell them they need to resolve this issue?
I've talked to them. This is another one for Friday night that was parked, and said there was no signs, and argued that they were not on the crosswalk, but the property owners, staff, Friday night were told that the business said that they could park there. Our sergeant made contact that night, and they were like, absolutely not, we know better, there's no parking. We did not tell them that, so I don't know if people are just taking a risk or chance. I know the owners are also in cooperation with the Haven property. They have permission to park over there as long as an event is not going on there. Don't know how long that will last, if his events start picking up, et cetera, but they do have an agreement that they can park there as of yesterday when I spoke to him.
Commissioner Sears?
Can you go back one slide? And may I ask the planning department if there's any work, I mean, with the construction equipment and the pallets of what looks like pavers on that property, has anything been filed for land disturbance, et cetera, on that property, or do we know anything why that is there?
No, nothing's been filed for this property. I did have code enforcement that checked on it. They said the pavers that are there are the exact same kind of pavers that are at Blue Moon, so perhaps this is overflow, or they just put it over there, but we have two people checking it. If they see we're preferring, they'll go and stop working.
Thank you.
The lot, I believe, that is there, I believe the Haven owner owns that. The owner of Blue Moon said that there was talk about to see if he would be interested in it. I think the price was too high that he recommended. I don't know if there's permission that has been given to park on that lot, but my question would be, if there is, how would they access it? If we have the no parking on the right-of-way right here, if they're driving through, if that is something to do with any type of ditch or swell or anything for stormwater that I don't deal with.
Well, may I just say, for me, I don't have, you know, we had, we have no parking designated along there. You've addressed the signage. Anybody who parks there is going to get ticketed. I personally don't have any problem with any stretch of the west side of the beach road being designated no parking. I mean, just generally, I can't, I can think of very few places where it would be appropriate to park along the beach road, on the shoulder of the beach road. So whatever we decide is appropriate and problematic, yes, we should do that.
And with the bypass, it's already deemed no parking, but we only strategically in the past have placed signs where there would be an interest to park near Jockeys Ridge, by the outlet malls, et cetera. The other ones are just always labeled as no parking, we just don't have the signage out there just for a little bit of...
I think we should be communicating with the owner about the urgency of resolving this in some way. There are other mechanisms, and there are other properties. You know, I'll give an example, and the church that I belong to is one block from a major restaurant in Killable Hills. There's no sidewalk, but they, that restaurant came to us and rented part of the parking, at a pretty minimal cost, but they rented that parking for their staff, and they walked the block back to the restaurant. And so, you know, and our ordinance already permits that, and so there are potentially facilities where that can be done. And I think we just have to, you know, enforce the rules or let the problem get resolved, and give them a certain amount of time. I mean, give them, not, not allow them to park where it's designated no parking, but understand that, you know, it's going to take a minute to figure out where you're going to get these people parked and resolve the problem.
And it could have just, I mean, opening week, everybody wants to see it new, but I don't want to also sit around and take the chance that people get used to doing things and then come up as well.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Mayor, if I could just may also, I couldn't agree more with what Mike said, that we need to look at our parking requirements. I had several people come to me before the restaurant even opened and said they don't have enough parking. That's going to be an issue for y'all.
Well, we mentioned that.
Now it's come to fruition. And sometimes people don't use good common sense, and they just park wherever they want to. And I appreciate the police department sergeant that was working that night handling that issue, them communicating with staff, and the police chief coming up with some recommendations to hopefully address this.
Well, we mentioned that when the review process was going on, when they stated ten employees, they got ten in the kitchen, that didn't count for the front of the house. So we knew that that was going to be a problem, but they meant what was required under our current ordinance.
Commissioner Sanders?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the police chief's recommendations for Highway twelve to amend the traffic control map.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your attention to that. Did any other, we, I think we sort of circuited the commissioners' agenda.
I just have one thing. Being where I live, there doing some roadwork and paving, I received a letter from the town about the work, and I just want to thank Dave Ryan for the letter. I mean, it lays everything out, very informative, and when we're having projects done in other areas of the town, with you sending those letters, I'm thankful that those residents are getting the information that they need. So thank you for the work you did with that.
Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor's agenda is consideration of a resolution opposing Senate Bill 317, House Bill 562. We've talked about this a little bit, and one of these is the, is the rule that would permit, or actually require, that towns permit accessory dwelling units anywhere that residential is permitted, deals with parking standards, those sorts of things. The board, I believe, is aware that I sent a letter several weeks ago to our representatives specifically about the accessory dwelling unit question, when we became aware of that, expressing the town's concerns about that. We got no response from our representatives. We are not getting responses from our representatives. We have the other issue that we requested legislation on the, on the beach holes ordinance, that we are not getting any response despite repeated emails and phone calls on that topic, and so...
Yes.
And I will note that one of these bills has passed the House, and I sent, I sent the board this morning an email. I went and looked at the roll call votes to see how our representative voted on that, and that was House Bill 409 on regulation of accessory dwelling units. Mr. Kidwell voted aye, but I will also note that that vote was one hundred and six ayes to seven noes, and so that bill, House bill, had overwhelming support, and we may be waving our arms in front of a oncoming train, but nonetheless, it is appropriate that we, I think, pass this resolution, at least send it to our senate representatives, who I will say unfortunately has also not been terribly responsive yet. But you have that resolution in front of you. I'm not going to read that, but it, essentially, it pushes back against all of those rules that would impose the state's authority over the town's ability to make its own good planning decisions. So if we would adopt this, then we would get this to our legislators, hopefully later today, and again, continue to follow up with telephone calls and encourage, you know, anybody who's concerned to also call them.
Motion to adopt is presented.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, for all those people that watch our meetings and listen to our meetings, as some are doing now, contact your local representatives. If you want the town to continue to be able to exercise our own planning documents and how we want to develop the town, instead of being told that we have to allow certain things within the town, contact your representatives.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it was interesting. We had folks in the room who appreciated the process that we just went through to make really thoughtful decisions for ourselves, and that worked for our citizens, worked for our business community, worked for everybody. Everybody worked hard on it, did a good job, and the state would say, no, we're just going to tell you what you have to do.
In this discussion, may I ask the attorney a question related to that? With the state taking the control over or the ability to implement any ordinances in the town, would an HOA of any particular neighborhood within said state or town have the ability to regulate that themselves?
Yes, the HOAs, their authority is separate from the ordinance authority or the statutory authority given to the town, and with the erosion of local government control that's been going on for quite some time in the legislature, there has been, as sort of a corollary, an emphasis on reserving rights in homeowners association and in covenants so that people themselves can agree on certain kinds of controls. They just don't want local government to be able to impose them or to require them.
I would hope that anyone that's watching, that had an HOA or had an HOA that maybe didn't get signed, might reform that HOA prior to any of this, if any of those things...
Or neighborhoods that have thought about HOAs.
Correct. I know NAGCET COGS is updating their covenants, and this was something, some of their language was left in there just because of what the state's doing.
Can a town become an HOA?
It could be a private town, though.
I mean, what they're trying to do is to force, what they do in Raleigh doesn't work for us here.
Right.
And that's the thing, we're different.
Yes.
And what they're trying to push on us is not going to work in some cases for us.
This plan has been endorsed by the Home Builders Association. What the state's doing has been endorsed, according to what was on the news the other night that the home builders were endorsing this.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Carolyn, I will sign that when the meeting's over, and we will send that up the line. Appreciate that. You know, this is a complete aside. I'll take, I'll take just a minute. Some of the things, the legislature is looking at a system for funding educational systems, for school systems, similar to what they did with DOT. In other words, they would have a, essentially like a point system that would benefit urban areas, similar to the way the DOT rules work.
Or the occupancy tax?
Yes, occupancy tax, and have a very negative effect on rural schools, and I'm aware of the example that Hyde County, for example, would score poorly, and that their allocation from the state would be cut in half for a needy county that needs, you know, every penny they get from the state. But you're only talking about, in their case, cutting eight million down to four million, but eight million to four million in a place like that is devastating, so you have to wonder where their heads are.
Could you write a letter opposing that?
Yes, I would be happy to.
And also, the other thing that it does, along that same vein, it would allow school vouchers for anybody of any wealth to apply for state money to send their kids to charter schools.
Yes.
And not have to pay for it, which means it takes more money out of the public education system.
Yep. Thank you. Yes, I will do so. That brings us, I believe, to closed sessions. I will ask before they do that, is there other business that board members are aware of before we go to their closed sessions? Hearing none, then I would make a motion that we go into closed session for the purposes indicated, to consider applications received for the White Keeper and NAGS Header awards pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1182, and also, at the town attorney's request, to consider acquisition of property at 100 East Hollowell Street pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A5, and to confer with the town attorney regarding 205 East Baltic Street pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Thank you. The board will be in closed session.
There it is. All right. So the board has returned from closed session. Mr. Whitey, anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The board did take a couple of actions, but nothing needs to be reported on those at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We asked the board about other business before we recessed to the closed session. So that brings us to a recess to a budget workshop at 9:00 a.m. on May the 17th.
Make a motion to that effect.
Have a motion as our second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Board is in recess.